Good captions, everything?
It's showing it's on.
Okay. Okay, great.
Just wait. Is it green?
It's green.
Just on one side though.
Yeah, it's, well, no, that's okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Oh, there we go, we got captions now. Okay, give me a moment.
All right, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second, please?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lekid?
Aye.
Trustee Linfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not? Okay, would the clerk give us the highlights of the open meeting compliance certification, please?
Sure. I don't have any notes with me, I'll link it. If you're in the audience and you wish to, or online, to ask a question of the board, if you're online, raise your hand and you can ask the board directly. If you put it in the Q and A, I will ask the board for you. I do not respond to chat. If you're in the room, just come up to the podium and be recognized. Please provide your name and address, if allowed by law, and let's just all have a nice, quick, and friendly meeting.
Oh, with that being said, I'd like to ask our scout to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose will we live, in justice for our world.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Is there anyone who has? Pardon me?
No, teach him a couple.
They know how to do the pledge, let me tell you. Okay. Any, let's see, any public comment? Anybody commenting online?
We have a few participants online.
Okay.
And it's always quiet.
Do you think how many participants are?
We have two.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Okay, let's start in on our meeting. Oh, Dave's not here for this. We should probably wait for Dave because he wanted to.
Oh, is he coming?
I'm thinking he is, I'm thinking he's running late.
Might as well.
I mean, I was just.
Yeah, I'll text him.
Thank you, yeah, just, you know, maybe I caught up on something.
I have comments differently. I haven't heard from him differently.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, I just assumed as well. Well, we have 6:00 as our public hearing. Well, we can talk about the Climate Smart Environmental Board. There should be, did you send out the?
I forwarded the correspondence.
Yeah, Bill Smith responded, so you all saw that. I think kind of where we are is, and I can be part of the towns, or they have other sort of goals, I think, and initiatives in the hopper. So I'm thinking really just sort of moving forward. I know that Alexandria is reaching out to other villages and other communities about their environmental boards, kind of gathering some information for us, I think maybe that's another step.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
My question is that when I was researching other villages and what they had, it appears that there's some things often called an environmental board, but I didn't see anything that was specifically energy-driven. So I wondered if there was a difference between, like, they had environmental, I think it was in Fair, you know, Honeywell Falls, had an environmental board, but not, not this type, not Climate Smart Board.
You don't want me to.
I do understand, I do understand. And so, for example, I think it was Churchville that Alexandria reached out to.
We reached out to Churchville, they definitely have a Climate Smart Board, environment.
Okay, because I didn't see any of those.
But they call it an environmental board as well.
No, they actually do, they call it climate.
Oh, they do, that's right, because it's called Climate Smart Churchville, that's right.
It's in an odd place, I found it on their website. We did reach out to them and start the conversation to see if they're willing to share any of their goals and what they have done and when they, you know, how their board's made up, everything regarding it. And then the mayor responded quite happy.
Yeah, Mayor Hartman, yeah. They just reached bronze level. But they've been certified for quite a while, so they've really pulled it together.
So we're getting information from them and they're willing to give us some info to help us with the process.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll reach out to the other villages and see who else is going down that path.
Yeah, I think Rockport is too, as I recall, from the mayor's dinner.
Do they have a standardized criteria, a standardized criteria for what this board is supposed to accomplish, what goals they're supposed to set, what type of advisory they do?
I think we cast that out initially when we started the conversation, but I'll add that back to the packet now that we answered the question.
You could redistribute it to the board, you've already received that information, so how about if we, you know, we can.
Yep, we'll put it back on the next agenda, we'll add the, what, you know, what they gave us and any information we get from the other municipalities.
And that's standard for everyone, correct? It's not.
The information that they gave to us is standard, I guess statewide.
Yeah, I think it's the criteria that's put forth in terms of what the state is looking for to meet the benchmarks when you set up a board. And really, the board, I think, tracks the initiatives, you know, and does the benchmarking, helps with the benchmarking. And some of that has actually already been done just a short time ago, so, yeah. Okay, let's see. You know what, why don't, why don't we do, should we skip to your reports then, just because they?
Just an update, he has a work emergency and it sounds like he'll be out of his way.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay. Yeah, maybe just reports.
Yeah, I guess it's just me tonight, of course.
Yeah. Everybody's on gage.
Well, I will start with the bill of day. Are there any questions or concerns with the bill of day? I didn't see anything too overly exciting. You know, the high ticket is always healthcare, I've seen stuff explanatory. There's really nothing too exciting. So if everybody's okay with the bill of day, we'll move that forward.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill of days presented.
A second. Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lekid?
Aye.
Trustee Linfear?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And September financials. So we are completely caught up.
Thank you.
I love when we have September done, we're in October, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Moving along good. And as I stated last meeting, it's really early in the process, there is one negative, and it's in the village board in the conferences, and it's actually going to go more negative because we have bills that are being paid for that is a conference attended, the board approved, or trustee co. So I'm really not sure where to take it from, so I'm leaning towards contingency for $1,000 to maybe $1,500 to make sure it's stable for the rest of the time, before they agree on that one.
Is there a transfer proposed along with the finances, or is that, or do we move to approve the finances first and then?
We'll move to approve the finances, I'm just, I didn't write it up because it's only one, and I know I could do that verbal, but if we want to discuss the financials, I'm not seeing anything too exciting. Early days in the process, unless there's something we want to talk about.
No, it just seems that maybe next year we'll be proven to look at increasing the conference budget if it allows for another.
Yeah, we have stayed pretty steady with the trustees and really haven't had many conferences, so this is really the kind of line that's been hit in a very long time. In fact, I think I've transferred it to other lines in the past.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I encourage you to go to conference.
That's a good thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the September financials as presented.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Linfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lekid?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I have approval to do the budget transfer as requested.
Motion to approve the budget transfer as stated.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Linfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lekid?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Real quick, while we're on the budget, I do want to bring you to one line that is a little concerning and will be requesting a budget transfer for now that I was informed today. If we go down to the clerk in the postage, due to the number of mailings we've been doing for planning, board, and their needs, because of the way our code is, we're, there's a difference of opinion, but we're sending out mailings to residents, and right now we have mailing going out for 700 residents regarding the LWRP, which at the current rates of postage, the labor, the time, there is a fix, in my understanding, was speaking to Jeff in the past, and I think we did discuss this at one of the previous meetings, in changing the rate rates that the posting of a sign will suffice. I would like to request the board to look at that because this is quite expensive to notify, and a lot of times, they're not read, they're not, I mean, I think we can do better, right, with putting on the website, you know, posting, the postings really do, the signs really do make people know what's going on with the property. And if we want to continue down the path of doing all these mailings, then we really need to increase our postage line.
How much is the mailing that's going out now?
I'm going to guess, well, 700 times postage plus labor plus envelopes plus.
Stationery, yeah.
Plus, you're paying at least $1,000.
Wow, just for the one, every mailing?
That's the LWRP for the short-term rental, yes. So, you know, at the end of the day, it is a board decision, but my recommendation is to, let's put money where it's better used. And how do I put that?
So the, so really the action then from the board would be to maybe direct Jeff to take a look at this.
Direct Jeff to prepare that local law so you can amend that section of code what we've put down the cost on these mailings.
How many times?
It's happening every meeting now.
Every single meeting?
Yeah, there's quite a bit going out every meeting, so we're averaging about 100 hours in postage every morning for planning, so it's automatically going to wipe the budget. It's not even the other mailings that we do.
Well, we're not even halfway through the year.
No, we're three months into.
Oh.
And the reason why we're doing so many mailings is because we're making so many changes in local laws, like what was the?
No, it's not local laws, it's an application's going in front of planning.
Got it.
That are triggering the notification.
So just to the surrounding neighbors?
To the surrounding neighbors, going to 300-foot, and making sure we're catching everybody, I think we're just.
And so what a lot of, a lot of municipalities do is they post the signage?
Correct.
All right, I'm, got you.
Yep, and actually I think we're doing both, we're posting the signage and.
Yes, yes, because I've seen the signs up.
On the website. We're, we're definitely, I don't want to say overkill, but we can.
Do we have the ability to do it by email?
That's a good question because we don't know necessarily, email address doesn't tell us whether they're within the area. We do send out a notification of all the meetings, like we do with the village board, so we are putting that information out, it's up to, on the website. When the sign is posted, it's directing them to the website or probably the child. So we are getting, trying to get that message out, so I believe the message is getting out there. I just think this is, in addition, it's a very costly addition with only postage going out.
Absolutely.
So per year, what do you think that that, that figure is, 2,000, 2,500?
It's hard to guess because I don't know what applications are going to go in front. If we go that they average without a major application, let's say 150, that's on top of what we do normally. So you could be increasing your postage line, which right now we did 1,500, I would ask for 4,500 in that, just for the sake of.
I'm just wondering if a better use of that money might be in, put into a newsletter that goes out once a year, to take even half of that budget. I know it doesn't address the part necessarily about the, about the change in, in public hearing, but it could answer.
Well, you still need something in postage. We've had a limited amount of postage, and typically this has been okay, we've been running okay, and I can shift from lines if it goes a little over, but what you're talking about with the changes in the website and things we're doing, I think we have that outreach and we do send out the constant contact as needed, but.
I might understand that the reason why this postage has, the mailings have increased is that there was a different interpretation of the code that currently exists by legal counsel?
Yep.
For the planning and zoning board. Up to this point, there has not been that type of interpretation.
Correct, it was going out at the sign, you know, one or the other.
Right.
And we went to the signage, so now.
So this is a change.
Correct.
That's, okay, just want everybody to understand, so this is now a change that's being brought back to the board because they have now changed an interpretation of code, and where we are, what you're saying is, we could amend the code so it's, it's clear that if a sign is posted, that is the notification.
Correct, and that legal notice is also on the website, everything's there, so, and it's also in the paper, so we are putting it out in the paper, so we are still doing the paper, we have to legally, and we're posting the property and for planning, we're also sending out, you know, you know, the outreach to residents, I understand what you're saying, Lily, and we are working on finding ways to do that that isn't so costly.
Yeah, because there is, there is a segment of the population that's not getting emails and they're not online and so forth.
Yeah.
There's another part of this, and I'm just wondering if we might amend it to just say, to contact the direct next-door neighbor. I think that person would have the most.
You could look at changing the code to put the owner's on the applicant to say that they went around, talked to their neighbor and have their signature on it.
Something. Doesn't Webster do that?
Yes, Webster did that.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, to me, is.
The applicant notifies the neighbors required to.
It's a more of an impact because they're actually neighbor-talking to neighbor and explaining the project, and if they have a problem, they can come in, and if they don't want to sign off, they don't have to sign, they have that. And they can note that. So that's one way to make sure we're reaching a certain number, you know, just general thoughts and many.
Yes.
So the process.
With impact, the problem.
But that, even with doing that, we still need Jeff to change it up.
Okay. So is the board amenable to just having Jeff take a look at this?
Make an adjustment.
To make that adjustment and bring it back then to the board?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can we just state what the adjustment, do we know what the adjustment is yet?
I think he's going to research a couple things, like.
I have it in my code, I mean, I wrote a pencil in it, it's like a four or five-word change.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay. It's not substantive.
Yep, and you can make the planning board do a change on the application that they must notify and have their neighbors sign off on their applications.
Until then, we invest in a roller moistening thing for the envelopes, the staff don't care about.
We pull the tab, but it is, you know, it's a lot of pulling. Okay, what else did I have for the board? Sorry, I lost my sheet. Oh, and I provided you the 2025 village board meeting schedule. Is there any concern? Now, I know this is a little different this time because we found that going to meetings and without two meetings in the summer in November, December is troublesome with paying bills. And find that our vendors don't want not to be paid and timely payments, so what I did is kind of scheduled bill pay meetings in there for the purpose of it being quick bill pay, boom, 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 if everybody's okay with that.
No, I think that's, as a practical matter, I think it makes sense.
We've kind of had to schedule that, huh, anyway, so.
Yeah, I just figured the.
Let's just go on to it.
Let's just, I, I don't see any other way around it. So is there any, oh, there is one change on every meeting starting at 5:30, they're actually 5:00, so it's that. Any questions or concerns from any of these dates?
I'm just looking at the two holiday ones, the two holiday bill pays, but I'm just trying to see how close they are to the holiday when people travel. The 25th, is that Thanksgiving week, November 25th? Then Thanksgiving's the 27th? Yes, it is, and then the 23rd, obviously Christmas is 25th, so.
Yep, and I only need three people.
Yeah, we just need a quorum.
Unless I have a quorum to pay the bills.
That's my one.
I mean, worst case, if we don't have a quorum, we can change the date.
Right.
You know, worst case, because we've done that too. You know, but it gets us going, as we say.
No, that's it. Can I have board approval on the meeting dates?
Oh, yeah, is there a motion, please, to approve?
I make a motion to approve with the meeting changes to begin at 5:00 P.M.
A second.
Okay, trustee Lekid?
Aye.
Trustee Linfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall, are you?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor Plummer? Motion passes.
Okay. We're jumping around a little bit because we were waiting for you because we were.
And I apologize, there was a Q and A question, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Okay, real quick, Emily Diaz, she says, could we leverage new technologies like emergency tech services other municipality use for such notices? And I think we are looking with the website, as I said, other ways of notifying residents.
Yeah, I got you. Oh, since, since you've joined the meeting, I just want to ask trustee Marshall if he has anything to disclose regarding, or conflict of interest regarding the agenda item this evening.
Number seven, I will not be discussing it, I've restocked my conflict and I have conflict on number seven.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're going to circle back and start in on the agenda items, starting with the first one up, the village tree legislation. I know you have the test that got to be brought back to the board for discussion.
So last board meeting, we had a nice discussion about trees, the presentation with regards to the tree that moved down on one of the crossroads behind Ran Place, near Ran Place. And it just reinvigorated this idea that we've got a great canopy, and oddly, the more often we've talked about trees, the faster they seem to come down.
Yep.
It's, you know, perhaps the fear that someday there will be a tree code and the concern that maybe now's the time to take them down sooner than later. So maybe I'll mention this email that just circulated later today as well, which is the code for the heritage tree. So the last time we spoke about the tree ordinance, you know, my position, and maybe still to some extent now, is how aggressive or strict do we get with residents to prevent them from cutting down a tree that, you know, within general reason, needs to be cut down? I mean, the fact that they need to go find an arborist and go through all these steps and then bring it to the board, is a rather laborious way of going about it, but one that I, I think the step that we took to put in place the heritage tree, you know, you're not going to have a lot of people that.
Volunteer.
Volunteer their trees to be heritage trees, even though you might get an arborist to boot. So one of the benefits of putting the last legislation on the docket and it's included in the packet, was it allowed us to not only bring to the public what we had talked about in the past and adjusted or, you know, turned down based on our vote then, but it allows us to reintroduce the idea of what exactly is it in there that might be too restrictive to let us, to get us to a point where maybe we could consider a canopy protection that's more broadly applied, right?
Could you speak to what's too restrictive, just so I think everybody understands?
Yeah, so just a couple ideas, yeah.
And this, just so the public knows, this was an ordinance that was brought before the board that I supported to protect the entire canopy of the village, and so, you know, we had a really good discussion, and then that's why I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed, so now it's coming back to the board based on some input from some residents at our last meeting, and, you know, so if we can sort of pick up kind of where that was left off, will the discussion would be helpful?
I, I think that, for me, the discussion was heavy enough to make me want to say, okay, remind me why I voted in the last time, remind me, you know, what are the elements of it that I felt I didn't want to be on board with? And then I also asked the question, the canopy is where it is today, not because we've had a tree ordinance, but because people like trees. But recently I acquired a property, they had a tree in the front that was nice, and to get insurance on the property, they said I had to cut down the tree. I think it's kind of ridiculous. So now you have insurance agents or companies that are essentially pushing homes with trees to cut them down to get insurance, and the next thing you know, you're going to have a whole bunch of properties without trees.
Hope you found a different insurance company.
I did.
Yeah, that's what I do.
I did, and surprisingly, it wasn't that much more expensive, but nonetheless, I still have to think about what I want to do with that big pine. But it brings me to this, in looking at the old ordinance that we had turned down, what things in there made me question is a little too strict? And I'll give you one. And perhaps it's the one that is incredibly important, but it's the recommendation of a certified arborist or tree service that will be performing the removal. So the recommendation of an arborist or tree service. I wonder if there's a way that the village can perhaps provide or be looser in its definition of that. A tree service is going to cut down a tree if you ask it to. They may not recommend you cut down a tree. So what we're asking for specifically is somebody to come in, an arborist or a tree service, and say, this tree is dying, it's the only reason to cut it down. Maybe there's other reasons and other flexibility, right? Is there something that the village could provide, right, to allow that to happen? And maybe the other thought is the or. I kind of like the or in section three, it said, the decision of the board shall be based upon consideration of section 192 through 42.8. So when Jeff wrote this, in section three, well, 192 dash four, section three, there is six criteria that the decision would have to be based on, but there was an or, and the or was relatively straightforward. The decision of the board shall be based on consideration of all the other things in 194 dash four, two, A through I. Meaning the decision's a little bit more open-ended, where somebody could come in to the planning board and say, hey, I want to cut down this tree, you know, nobody says I have to, but here's the reasons why, and I'd be happy to put up a couple other trees in the back, or, you know, I don't really have room on my property, blah, blah, blah. And, and again, I go back to this idea, like, this property, again, that we have outside, our current home doesn't have any trees on it, oddly, but the rental does. And there are two, there's three trees on it, two of them are just swallowed by ivy, and basically, one's got to come down, and the other is, probably has to have all the ivy removed from it, and it interrupts where a fence line is. Not saying I want to cut them down, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a conflict of interest with this per se, but it's, it's this question of, you know, can we create an ordinance that protects the canopy but offers a little bit more flexibility? Then you can only cut this tree down if you get a recommendation or an arborist to tell you that it needs to come down.
Do you understand, I mean, and just so, because I know you don't have copies of this ordinance in front of you, it is online, but it's, it really is protecting mostly native trees and the, and identified non-invasive, non-natives. So if there's an invasive tree, or even a tree that's diseased or compromised, it can come down, you know, which is actually fairly standard for ordinances of this type, you know, that you're really looking to protect those natives and eliminate those invasives as needed. So, you know, I don't know, you know, what is it that you do want to see? What would that look like then?
Well, you know, I guess this is the open to discussion. Any comments from others?
Yeah, I have a comment. First of all, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, are we talking about trees on private property, both front and back?
Yep.
Okay. So front and backs, because, I mean, I'm looking at this as more of, very similar to H P B, right, public view. So street canopy, village, village side street canopy, so that when people are driving or walking down the street, that canopy is really protected. The backyards, I'm not as concerned about, just like H P B's not so concerned about the back windows in the back of the house. So I like to kind of use the H P B as kind of a, kind of a criteria or standard as to the way we look at our trees, because like, like Josie said, they are a living history for us. They're historic, they're historic to our village. So I would like to really focus more on the front trees, where I think we can be a little bit more strict because of that. The back trees, I think we can be a little bit less strict, but the front trees, I think, really need to be protected. And that's where we're seeing residents get most upset, the ones that are in the front The ones that are in the front of the houses, the ones that are close to the sidewalk, the ones that really interrupts the canopy of the street. I don't consider many of them in the back that people have complained about, because a lot of them, they don't see them. So the ones, the residents that have come to us are the two trees in front of the church, the ones on the fountain that people have been upset about. Those are the ones that seem to be sparking concern by residents and also by myself as well.
Well, I appreciate the thoughts. I, you know, I think when you look at the term canopy, you look at it holistically for our entire municipality, as opposed to sort of saying, the canopy is really here along our streets. Canopy, you know, habitats and nature, they don't know yard boundaries and they don't know streetscapes, they just know canopy where they want to nest and, you know, all of that. So I'm of a different mind with that. I think that when we did have a resident on Elbra cut down a major tree in the backyard, and that actually picture was shown to us, you know, residents were concerned. So I tend to look at canopy in the holistic sense that I want to protect the entire canopy in our village, you know, I think it's best practices.
And I guess I'm just trying to be sensitive to being less strict, so that people do feel that they have control of their own property. Because I know, Dave, you were very concerned about, even thinking about the front streets, and that's kind of where the heritage thing came in, the voluntary. So if we want to give residents the ability to do what they want with their property, I just think of that as kind of a happy medium in between what the residents see, you know, just to be a little bit more giving.
Okay.
Believe me, I would like to take, you know, I'd like to protect everything we could, but...
I'd like to protect mostly natives.
Yeah, this is a good discussion, and I'm glad that we're having this in the context, especially with residents who expressed interest in the last meeting. I'm still not sure exactly where I fall in this, and I'm still working through some of these things myself. I think that we do want to be sensitive to avoid adding too much process for people doing things like taking down invasive trees, of course, and this legislation does that. There is a five or a six-step process in the permit for tree removal, and so I don't want to throw that in front of everybody that's getting rid of a tree for a good reason. So I just wonder if we might want to at least consider particular concessions, like adding trees that we know are susceptible to diseases right now, like ash trees, to the category of things like invasive trees. The reasoning being that, you know, I don't think you need an arborist's opinion if there's a dead ash tree in your yard and, you know, the approval...
If there's a dead ash tree, this ordinance covers it, right?
Okay, if it's already dead, without the approval...
It covers it. If it's a compromised tree, the ordinance covers it. If there's a tree that jeopardizes public safety, the ordinance covers that.
If I may, though, the application for removal wouldn't, so F is the condition of the tree with respect to disease hazard proximity to the existing, but as part of that application for removal, they would still need a recommendation of a certified arborist or tree service. And so, to me, that part there is the biggest concern. And so maybe it's something that the building inspector could have some decision authority on, or that, again, we grant the board that is reviewing it, the opportunity to request a recommendation of a certified arborist or tree service, but not a condition of approval, whereas right now it is a condition of approval.
I would like to say, I just want to remind the board, we just hired a gentleman who is an arborist on our DPW crew, and we're very excited about that because of his background. And he's also familiar with native plants and species, so big bonus. So maybe that somehow can be incorporated in language, you know?
How do people feel about that, where the deciding board could have, they could have a choice, do they or do they not require it? And it could be that the application is considered complete without it, but that the board has permitted the opportunity to request it.
Like a call-up?
Yeah.
Have a call-up.
It adds an extra step.
I like that idea.
It might allow for a greater, so then somebody could go in and then say, okay, I got to take down this tree, or I want to take down this tree. They say to Steve, hey, can you give me the application? Check all these boxes, what type of tree is it? They check a tree, and they're like, oh, I don't even need to do this, I can just take it down. Or it's a maple, let's say, they check the box, and then they got to fill A through I, but they get to the part where the arborist says optional on, you know, following review, can be provided in advance, doesn't need to be, but it may be requested, right? And then they can basically know that they can quickly go to the board, get the opinion, the board can ask or not, and they can make a judgment call. I mean, it's better than the just, the legacy trees.
Well, I mean, whatever helps to protect the canopy.
I agree. Yeah, I think that's a great start.
And I'd like to get the whole board on, you know, on board with this. So let me go back, I mean, Justin, how do you feel about something like that?
Well, I think that what we've talked about are ways to make the process a little bit lighter weight, and I think that's good. Looking back at the minutes from our last meeting, which wasn't too long ago, it's just from last December, opinion was still really kind of mixed at that point, and the people cited were not in favor of some kind of comprehensive ordinance. I think it's important to listen to all of our residents, and we have a call on the comprehensive plan specifically for something that is less burdensome, which is along the lines of the heritage tree legislation. So I can't say at this time if I would vote to advance a more comprehensive legislation.
Question for you, so that's a good point on the heritage tree, but I don't think anywhere in our code we define heritage tree. We didn't, right? We don't have a defined...
Jeff has the definition in what he wrote.
What he wrote, this is the new definition, though, right?
Yeah. Do you have this?
Yeah, I do. So then, a tree may be designated as a heritage tree, but this is somewhat subjective. It's outstanding specimen, one of the largest, oldest trees, possesses distinctive form. What if a heritage tree is just simply a really old tree? I mean, what if it's, like, just...
Jump it up.
The word heritage is in the comprehensive plan, and Jeff's defining it nicely here, but it's a fairly strict definition. What if we considered a heritage tree to be anything over 10 inches instead of six, like this ordinance, or 12?
Or some age?
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have any thoughts on that?
I do not have thoughts, this is entirely a policy decision.
Okay.
So we can define heritage tree the way we'd like to define heritage tree?
Sure.
There's no standard definition that we've got to go by by?
It'll be whatever you say a heritage tree is.
There are some definitions...
There are definitions.
Yeah, yeah, that are, you know, like the Arbor Day Society, you know?
Yeah. So what if we wrote this code?
So we could even take a look at those and bring them back to you.
We haven't passed this one, the Jeff wrote that nobody's seen. What if we write this code, and instead of it being a full canopy protection, all trees involved, we call it heritage tree ordinance? And we'd find heritage tree is anything over 10 or 12 inches or some age that includes all these handles?
I thought we had to... Okay, hang on one second, folks, since we've got a couple hands going up and we want to hear, yeah. Just, he just asked the question of the board, so...
Yes. We had discussed that in the past, and I was sort of landing there. I had questions when we first discussed about personal preferences. If you own a home and you're doing renovations and now you've spent a lot of money on the front side of your home, and your preference is not to have a lot of trees in your front yard, right? We know that this has happened in the village, but that's your personal preference. I don't know how controlling it seems for the village to say, well, you can't do that. You've done this, but you can't take that tree down. So I wanted to be very clear that people understood, it's hard to change in the middle of the program. You've already owned your home, now you're going to tell people, there's this new law now. You thought you could take your trees down, but you can't. So I'd like to land somewhere in the comfort of having, yes, I want to protect our heritage trees, that's, I feel very strongly about that, everybody understands that I do. So, but the other part, personal, this is your property and this is, you own this and you have jurisdiction over your property to a certain extent. I just, I wouldn't want to feel too heavy-handed over it.
How big would the tree have to be until you consider it a heritage tree?
Well, there we go, that's where we probably need to research, really, very, you know, specific definitions of what that does look like. There were some hands up, Margot and then Bob.
Yeah, well, a heritage tree, if it's more than 18 inches wide, for example, could be a Bradford pear, or it could be an ox elder, and those are very messy trees, and they're bad trees. So to define it only on the basis of width, I think, is not a great idea. You could say width in terms of native trees.
And that's addressed in this ordinance, the distinction, you know, which we all think is important, because you want a canopy that is a sustainable canopy and not a destructive canopy with non-native trees. I can tell you, I took down a 68-foot-tall invasive Norway maple, it was massive, and I'm glad I took it down because I planted oaks. Yeah.
A couple of points. I think you're generally on the right track here. I think, you know, my perspective for managing the canopy of the dairy over the last 50 years, I think we have more heritage trees than anybody else in the village on our property. One thing to consider is provisions that will address something like the ice storm, because when you have a natural disaster like that, the process could be very cumbersome. Whereas trees for safety uses, you obviously have to take down. So you need a short circuit that can deal with that. You also need a provision for landscapes like the dairy have involved. We still have some trees that are from the mid-19th century, but we added new plantings along the way as ones aged out. And then the other thing, if you're going to do a comprehensive tree ordinance, I'd say just a couple other things, that let's set standards, we've done so much research on street trees, where they should be planted, how do you deal with wires that still keep a canopy on the street, like, you know, South Main Street on the east side now really needs new street trees, so canopy is getting very weak there, like in front of St. Louis Church. Also, the right area in order along the canal is a significant area of, yes, secondary growth, but there's a lot of wildlife habitat there in the arborium, and also the almond trail are something that comprehensive tree ordinance can address.
Thank you. I would like to say that the ordinance, that the draft of the legislation specifically addressed issues after, you know, acts of nature, you know, storms, that kind of thing, you know, public safety, clearly, regardless of whether the tree's an invasive or a native, if it's compromised and compromising public safety, someone's home, you have to take action. And so it's addressed in the ordinance, so, you know, appreciate that, yeah, for sure. Any other, yeah?
I did have some... Let me just check.
If I may, Mayor. So I think if we do define heritage tree to be something older, we'd keep all the same caveats with regards to type and equality and native versus not as the code was written previously. It's, and so I think the right approach here, people are comfortable, maybe we do a little work, and I don't know if the administration would be willing to take that on, but trying to create what is essentially a canopy ordinance, but using a definition of a heritage tree that is a little tighter, right? And then if it's okay, I would like to see the requirement of the arborist to be optional and somehow have that be changed in the ordinance. Maybe before Jeff does work on that, we can see if we can come to a majority agreement on what a heritage tree definition should be.
I think that's a starting point, you know, just revisiting that, you know? So, yeah, we can sort of take a look at that, and I know Zach has information as well, as does Steve, so, you know, certainly making...
If we're going down that path, too, we might just want to see if there are more detailed notes about what the comprehensive plan committee was saying around that discussion. Yep.
Maybe look it up, yeah.
Personally, I'm comfortable, too, that being all of us going to the planning board rather than our board. I don't think we need to, even though it's a new ordinance with a new review, I think it's something that the planning board could very confidently take up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Name and address, please, for the record.
Carol, 41, 41, in the ring. In fact, I think this is a really handy address, I guess I'm a little bit unclear on how, my question is really, is this going to mean an expense for the village in terms of having someone, you know, that's hired by a village, having to do the work as opposed to putting a notice on the homeowner to get somebody to say, yeah, this tree's got to go, it's diseased? Are we taking that on as a village and as taxpayers?
That's a good question. That's a question that, you know, the board needs to examine.
In the current ordinance, the way it was, it would have been adopted, the expense of the arborist would have been on the homeowner.
Yeah.
And my general default would have that continue to be true if the board orders a required. That's my initial fault, not being a village cost.
That wouldn't be a village cost.
My initial thought, I don't think, does anybody disagree with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
If they're reviewed, would have to be someone at the village, right? Or you mentioned someone that we just hired.
No, in other words, if we, say, for example, if we have an environmental board or tree board, or, you know, whatever, they could certainly give advice, that's going back to the planning and zoning board. If we have an arborist already on staff, they certainly could be counsel, you know, give advice to the planning and zoning board, they're a resource for, you know, our staff and for our village.
And even the residents.
Not unlike when we asked Jeff, or, I'm sorry, Zach, or Steve questions during our meetings, hey, what's your opinion on this or that? You could have an employee who walks past the tree, it's not a certified...
Why is going to the planning and zoning board not responsible for this?
That's what has been being proposed.
Could be, could be any of them, I suppose.
Yeah, it could be a separate entity as well, yeah, less, and then we'll wrap this up.
Just to clarify for everyone, I believe that the space between the sidewalk and the street is village property, is that right? So that would be village responsibility.
Which it always is, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely, everyone should...
Yeah, good clarification. Okay, thank you.
And I think the planning board historically does cite planet landscaping, so that's typically why it goes there.
Okay. Thank you. So we have our margin board here. So thanks to Jeff, all righty. All right, the section, just to make sure, the section I was coming back to the board for next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you put my name down again?
The whole board, we all want to...
I think we're all pretty open to discussion.
We all want to, you know, keep this moving here, as they say. Okay, so it's not quite fixed yet. Let's see, why don't we, oh, the LED streetlight conversion, we're removing that from the agenda. You had raised some questions about the lights, and we do not have our superintendent of the DPW here, who typically oversees our lights, or we do not have also our building inspector and code enforcement officer, they're both actually out of the village, so we'll bring that right back in on the next agenda, okay? So they can be here and weigh in as well, rationally. So skipping down then, we have seeker, the proposed local law on short-term rentals.
Please pass to the board members. Your bottom two.
The board's already approved, part one. She's sort of pretty filled out parts two and three. It's a whole lot of notes.
Are there any questions on this, or Jeff, you know, he tried to shut it up, of course, here?
Make a motion that we, this is a, no, is that right?
Yeah. Yes, well, I think we adopt findings in part two.
Okay.
And it's a negative declaration.
Negative, okay. Make a motion that we adopt the findings in part two and classify the short-term rental ordinance as a neg deck.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
And authorize the mayor to sign according to, and authorize the mayor to sign part three. I'll second the motion.
Okay, trustee co? Aye. Trustee Lanfer?
Aye.
Trustee Wookid?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Comer?
Motion carries.
Motion yes. Anything else on this, Jeff, for us?
I'm what, seeker? Oh, no, you're done.
Okay, just want to make sure there's...
Sorry.
I started, T's crossed, as they say. Okay, then why don't we...
We'll get it over to the planning board, we'll get it filed what it's supposed to be.
Okay, yeah, just to follow up on that, okay. Code definitions. This came up regarding an application, well, actually, you know what, why don't we jump down, because it's also a pertinent first of things, why don't we take a look at the village fund balance policy? I know you just kind of wanted to talk through that a little bit. And if you could just explain, just for people here, what the fund balance policy is, sort of, you know, why we have a policy for our fund balance?
It's simple, it's kind of like, how it's things. It's basically, you're knowing what your budget is, and a percentage of that you want to keep in savings to cover your...
to cover you for any unexpected items, you want to maintain it. Village currently has a fund balance policy, which is required by controllers, or currently 10 to 15%. So that's 10 to 15% of your current year's budget. So you take your budget, you times it times 15%, and that's what you should have available in your fund balance.
So our budget is roughly $2 million.
Correct.
So our fund balance should be between?
Ah, I can't do that.
Well, no, it's just saying like 200 to 200.
250.
200 to 250 or whatever.
250, 300,000. Personally, I think that's low, but it's also, I'm speaking on both sides of my mouth. I'd rather see it higher, but when you're unsure of your economic time, you want it lower so you don't be not in compliance with the controllers. Because when they come out, they audit you, if you have too much in fund balance, you get in trouble. And if you have too low in fund balance, you get in trouble. So there's like a sweet spot.
It's like Goldilocks and the porridge.
Yeah. So it's always making sure you have enough money in there for a rainy day, making sure. The goal is, if you go have more in your fund balance, you want to push it into reserves. And that is the conversation we had last time, was brought with the fund balance policy to be reviewed.
So at this point, what, where's the, where are you with the recommendation? Is it just bringing it back?
Where I am with the recommendation, this is where I say I speak out of both sides of my mouth. I'd like to see it, to me, 25 to 30% is optimal, because you just never know. But I also like seeing it lower right now, because we do have some things that could trigger us to go a little bit. And that has happened in the past due to actions that had nothing to do with what of the village. You just ended up and needed the money, so.
So it's kind of no harm, no foul.
No, 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 keeping it where it is is.
Okay, I just so.
For me is okay. I'm okay with doing that. I think at some point, once we really feel we're on stable ground, we should look at increasing that fund balance.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, I think. Yeah, Lily.
What if we looked at a more conservative approach to that? You said you've been functioning without feeling as if we have too little. It's not that, you're afraid of a what-if scenario.
It's a what-if scenario. Right now, I think we're in a what-if scenario. We've had things that in the past have caused us to be non-compliance with our fund balance. And I don't want to be in a position that we fall into that right now. I think for right now, until things feels, everybody feels comfortable. And obviously, the board can make any decision they want. I think keeping it where it is isn't a harm.
So a compromise might be, you were feeling like 25% would be optimum, but a compromise of an additional 5 or 8% or 10% might be, increase your comfort level without putting us in jeopardy of getting our knuckles wrapped by the controller. Or saying, what, why do you have so much money here? You need to reduce your taxes, because you've got too much.
Correct.
But we also could put it in reserves.
Right, we can move it to reserves. Even with moving money to reserves, I think I even said I'd like to keep a little more than the fund balance policy calls for, just because you want that safety valve. You know, the problem with making it higher is if, eh, things go the other way.
I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that higher scenario.
No, I wouldn't either. Honestly, I think most of us treasurers have like 100% in there. Just for a rainy day, but there's reality to all things. And, you know, is 10, 15% right now, we're in compliance, everything's good? Do we have more than that? Yes, we do. But.
So we're not being dinged already?
No, we're not being dinged. We're looking at taking actions with our current fund balance to maneuver into reserves, so we can show that we're trying to be in all compliance.
So we're accounting for things ultimately?
Yes, we're absolutely accounting.
Okay, yeah, Justin, did you want to?
No, I think it's good that we're revisiting this, and I think that we should try to make sure that some calendar at least once a year.
No, I agree.
But I think it's important to consider some of the context as well in recent years. You know, this, this predated some of the pieces that we have in place now, like the multi-year capital plan. We've also got better structured reserves, probably than, than we've had in several recent years. And so this kind of a buffer is, it's, I, I think that the importance of any single device for ensuring financial stability decreases when you've got a broader view on things like we have at this point. So I also feel like we don't necessarily urgently need to increase this right now, given all the other pieces that we've been placed in recent, in the last couple of years.
Yeah. No, but thanks for bringing it back to the board. I think it's, you know, we need to revisit all, obviously, so.
We'll make it part of our budget process, being in stages and take a look and, as long as we're in agreement and in compliance. That's the key point here, being in compliance with all kinds of the spectrum, not too much, not too little, Goldilocks syndrome, but, you know, and everybody feeling comfortable with that.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And our budget process starts usually typically end of January, February type of thing.
Yep.
So, yeah, because our fiscal year ends about May 31st, throws me off.
Just to be sure I understand what the fiscal plan to restore shortfall is. My understanding reading this is, it's an amount equal to, no less than, the 20% minimum of the range. So if any middle school kid gets that right, they're doing pretty well in math. My understanding is if 10, if it's 10 to 15%, now the answer is 8 to 12.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's 20% less than 10 to 15, you got to get to 8 to 12.
You got to get there, right?
Okay.
You have, the minute you're realizing you're not in compliance, you need to make an action.
Okay, so if 10 to 15 is the range, if we fall below 10, then we have to get to 8 to 12, which we're already there, so we just identify that we've done it, and we already have a fiscal plan, which is no change.
You have to make some changes. Thank you for that.
Wow. Hey, quick, repeat it.
Okay, indulge, because we don't want to do that.
Okay. All right, it's a unique wording of a, like a word, or whatever.
Let me put it this way, wording, and the controller likes it. So when the controller likes something, I tend to go, you got it.
So really, the issue is, don't fall below 8. Because if you're at 10, if you're below 10, you're out of compliance, but you're actually in conformity with the fiscal plan to remedy it, so it doesn't matter. You go below 8, that's the real challenge.
I would argue that they don't like 9.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fund balance policy as presented for the general fund.
And sewer.
And sewer at the same time.
I second.
Okay. Somehow we got there.
Next day.
Trustee co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfer.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Mayor Comer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
So next time, are we good to bring back reserves?
Sure.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's start in. Okay.
All right, do we want to focus on, I'm sorry, I'm pushing my way here. Do we want to focus on general or sewer? Do we want to, because doing them all at one time can be a lot.
I know. Well, that's why don't we pick the ones that we really know are ready to go, that way?
You want to practice on sewer and do general.
Practice on sewer.
I agree, so I mean, because sewer.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, that's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Sewer first?
Yep, sewer first.
Okay. Does the sewer fund is flush? Okay. I know, really. I'm working the room, I don't know. Okay.
It just hit me with these.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Someone had to say it. It is 6 o'clock, so we have a public hearing. Do you want to call that up, please, the public hearing? It's 9, 9 South Main.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have Mr. Swim in here?
All right, come on up. I'm waiting for you to come on. Yeah, come on up, pull a chair up.
Okay.
You're better now, right?
Yes. Couldn't do that coming here. Hi, my name's Brad Slumina, I'm from Rochester, New York, and I've been living in the village, at the village of the town of Pittsburgh for many years. I live at 2660 Highland Avenue. And the reason I'm here tonight is ask, to ask for a special use permit at the Bluehorn Turquilla location, 9 South Main Street. Our plan is to really make not many changes at all. It's a very small place, and really not going to make any changes to footprint, tables, chairs, and maybe do a couple things, a couple of mirrors, and a couple of pictures, golf pictures or something, but that's about it. I also, there's a, the near top on the bar, I might change anything here. Other than that, that's about it. The food and everything that we plan on doing, we plan on, because it is small, we're hoping to do a real good beef farm where those rolls are very hard to be at in work. They only last a day, but Mal is going to be doing all of our rolls and stuff if we can do it. And then we're going to do the roast beef, corned beef, turkey, and a daily soup. So that's kind of what we're thinking of doing. Everything will be done kind of kind of Italian style, so it'll be a minimum 8 ounces of meat, you know, fluffy, big, and with good rolls, so it should, should be a nice spot for the villagers with that. Our plan is also to have, as far as employees are concerned, there's really not many changes. I played golf at Oak Hill, and Oak Hill is closed for a couple of years now, and clubhouse, and all those employees have no place to work. So I've got a couple of people in line, ready to go, you know, and we probably have to have probably two to three people on every shift right now, you know, to get that done and have, you know, somebody doing the meats and all that stuff. And the other thing is, is our plan is to have a manager there on duty all the time. The owners can't be there every minute, but we'll have a management team from Oak Hill that will be there all the time, and they know the business pretty well. I talked with Mike, I've seen Mike Newcomb quite a bit, and he's very high on us going in there. And he's really let us, he's really just, just been very nice about everything, and he's more glad to work out a very nice lease, so that's a long term. But that's about it, so we're really not making many changes, you know. We're just really kind of using what we're doing there, and I understand the garbage and all that, where that's supposed to be and, and everything. And basically, we, you know, we want a nice place in the village. You could have the, almost an institution, where you get yourself a nice roast beef sandwich and a cold beer or something, and I think there's only, I think only holds 47 people. So it can't be, that's why we can't really make the menu that big. Of course, the menu will evolve, you know, and it usually becomes more ice sandwiches, which is kind of a pain, but you know, you got to do what the customer wants. But that's kind of the whole thing, you know, what we're doing.
So you'll be assembling sort of on, on premise, you'll be assembling the sandwiches?
Yes, they'll be in the basement.
Soups will be prepared ahead of time and heated up?
Yep, they're cracked by, but all the sandwiches, we just went out to Jacob's, I and it. They have some wonderful stuff, this French cooking, you ever see it, where they put in the water?
Subie.
It's amazing, and the roast beef comes out perfect every time, and everything is just so good and stuff. So that's kind of the plan with that, you know.
And your hours?
The hours, as I've gotten older, you know, and I'm ready to go to bed now. It's 8:30, 9 o'clock right now, you know, but I don't see people going out as late as they used to.
So what are your hours?
Our hours, well, we were hoping open up for lunch, and we're hoping during the week, open up probably till 9 to 10 o'clock. Of course, summertime, whether it being light till 9:30, we would want to be open later on, depending on the weather and stuff.
If you could give us the range of when you would be open and when you would be closed?
Okay, well, we'll say we'll be open at 12 o'clock for lunch, and we'll be closed at 11 o'clock, except for Friday and Saturday, and I would say 12 o'clock in that area. But if nobody's there, we're, we're closing now, you know.
So I just have, so in your application, you've written Monday through Sunday, 4 p.m. to 10 p.m.?
Yes.
And then weekends, Friday and Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 midnight? So that's what's in your application?
In my application, but you know what, I was just thinking of, it was getting it threatened and all that. You know, I've been thinking a lot of this, that we probably, in the village, probably, like, we still open up for lunch. Because if we open up 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock during the winter, we're going to be closing at 9. So at that point, I mean, you're only open 20 hours a week now.
It's really what you, you know, but how you want to set up your business.
Right.
You know, we don't, we don't have a say that way, this is your business.
They speak in our lab.
But that would be the plan, and.
Changing that from like 12 to 10 p.m. Monday through Sunday?
Yeah, Monday, except for Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
And the summers would be a little different, because it's light all night, you know.
So it would be within that, that time here, that time bracket?
I would think on Friday and Saturday in the summertime, we might be open later, maybe 12 o'clock.
So I have another question for you. First of all, thank you. We love, we love the place, we've always loved it. The basement kitchen, that's really the major change, I think, that, that we've seen. So I see your, you know, your max here, nice, very nice.
I have a better one for you.
So did you have to do any additions, did you have to do any changes? Did you have to bring in anything new that wasn't already there? Like, was there a substantial change down there that you had to make?
You don't want to make the changes yet, but what the plan is, where they have, they only have a, they don't have really a cooling down there, they have a sandwich unit, and they have a few other, other things. I'm going to have to get some cooling down there.
So you'd be working then with the health department?
Yes.
For final inspections and also with our inspectors?
Yes.
Yes, Justin.
This, this sounds really good, and the food sounds great. It's, it's a small area where alcohol is served. Do you still envision a place where parents can take their kids, for example?
Absolutely, absolutely, you know. I'm not opening this up for, I mean, we're not opening this to, for the young kids to fill in there and.
So it's be like an Irish pub, where you're the family.
The family, you know. And again, that's how the menu is, and all, maybe, you know, a young kid can't eat that big sandwich. We'll do a lot of little smaller ones, you know, on a reasonable price, you know.
I know that we, there was some research, I know, Jeff, that you did in terms of prior permits for this location and what had been approved, and sort of where we are now.
Yeah, I didn't really do the research. Laura did the research.
Laura, yeah.
This was last approved in 2021. And it was one special permit issued for tequila rea and an accompanying restaurant next door.
Supposed to be a Mexican restaurant?
So it's one special permit supported by one restaurant. So that never happened. So there's, the question's going to be, and, I mean, there's no restaurant next door to support this use. So the question's going to be whether or not the kitchen proposed is a kitchen that will satisfy the restaurant definition.
Which goes actually to our.
Yeah.
Item number six on our agenda, those definitions, it's something.
Right, now, what I gave you there is from the previous special use permit. And that's the kitchen that they have right there. And that was done in 19, I think, 2019.
Understood, but, but what?
That was the second.
Yeah.
Permit ago. Okay, that was the one, okay. Yeah, so that was 19. I'm not familiar with it. Yeah, yeah, in 2021, it went to a cocktail tap, this kind of use in conjunction with the restaurant next door. So the food for the tequila rea was going to be, was going to be satisfied by the food from the restaurant. Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, but that was really.
Because they had a full-service kitchen, which meant the definition of a restaurant.
Did I use that too?
But hang on one second, if I could just, I just want to make sure we're really having this discussion with clarity.
I'm working a lot here.
Okay, hang on one second. So that the permit that you're discussing, the last permit that was granted, was to the tequila rea with, with them using a full restaurant kitchen next door?
It was to the tequila rea and either the Blue Corn Restaurant or something, whatever it was going to be.
Never happened.
But it was a joint permit.
Right.
The same owner.
Same owner, operator, it was one operation.
Right, same owner.
Drinks here.
So, so what?
Drink, rice, you know, it's like a restaurant.
I just want to follow through for clarity, so we all understand this, just going forward because of what's present before the board. So there was a permit approved for the tequila rea being served by the restaurant kitchen, a full restaurant kitchen next door, thereby meeting in our code the definition of what a restaurant. Hang on one second, please. It is now back to the board, just for one second, if, if I may. So it meet the definition of a restaurant? That restaurant servicing the tequila rea never happened, was never built, so, or put in place. So the permit actually was technically, would you say, Jeff, was it in violation because of how it went forward without the restaurant?
Yeah, it was definitely in violation.
Okay, so it was in violation. So now, here we are with, with an op, some, an ongoing operation of the tequila rea that's just simply being transferred to new ownership, we're all excited, we're going to have sandwiches. And does that meet the definition of a restaurant? We're stuck with that in our code right now, which is why our agenda items, the next one actually is to look at definitions of what's a bar, what's a tavern, what's a restaurant, what's a lounge, because we're kind of a little bit twisted in between because of the last permitting that was issued. So, so that's why we're bringing it back to the board. So, so that's why we're bringing it back to the board right now, yeah, Justin?
I, I would just like the board to consider that perhaps a beef on wek is not an ordinary sandwich and should be considered in a different class.
The class.
But it's warm and cheesy.
It's one day with the caraway salt and then the, you know, Jewish salt and the caraway.
So we are invoking the beef on wek clause.
Spring in the code.
I don't actually see that in the ordinance, but I.
With Casey's.
The food will subject to quality tasting.
That's right.
I mean, we're trying to work, work through this here, you know, because we really want this to go forward, you know, so.
I think the heart of this, to me, um, is the definition in our code of what constitutes a kitchen. There is a kitchen in this building and it could be utilized or it might have to happen in another part of the building, but to define what we feel is a kitchen and, and not by the type of food necessarily, or the level of food, but just that food is being prepared in this space, uh, something, you're the lawyer, maybe you can figure it out. So I'm just saying, you're not an ass, yeah, to, to,
Okay.
Because we have a lot of criteria for kitchen, it, it's about the oven and the, you know.
It's not.
We wouldn't be doing any of that.
Yeah, but.
Well, first of all, I didn't write this code, well, maybe I wrote this code, but um, I wrote it specifically to distinguish between taverns and restaurants. And the distinction in our present code is um, containing convenience for cooking an assortment of food which may be required for ordinary meals, the kitchen which must at all times be in charge of a chef with the necessary help and kept in a sanitary condition, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so chef might be one place where we could make a change, I'm.
So the, the issue right now before this board is whether the proposal, uh, Mr. Sullivan's proposal meets this definition of restaurant.
Okay.
Because, um, otherwise it would not be permitted in the zone.
So what's an ordinary meal?
It would be a meal that you would expect to go to a restaurant to get that.
Like a beef on wek?
And soup, and a cup of soup.
But is a beef, I'm, I'm just asking, does, does, you know, is the soup gonna be prepared onsite or is it gonna be warmed up onsite, is, can you get more than a beef on wek that is prepared in the kitchen? Um, those are the questions I would ask. You know, is a meal with, you know, starch or meat, the vegetable, I don't know.
Well, as someone who worked in the business for over twenty years, there's all kinds of meals.
Yeah, so that, that really is, that's, that's the issue.
Okay, yep, yep, yeah.
I, I got.
Yeah, yeah, we just wanted to have our.
I was just gonna mention, you know, with a small restaurant, it's that small, it would be very hard to have an actual chef on duty that is a chef, and now a sous chef, a chef. How are we gonna, fifty dollars an hour for a guy and it's a little.
We really understand all this, we understand your business model, we totally do. What we're trying to do is look at the code and call him, call him a chef.
Right, oh, yeah, security.
Yeah, put a toke on.
I think that the, the stigma point, and I, again, I don't know, you know, I have no, I don't care. I'm just looking at the code, um, the stigma point's gonna be, right, a food and a meal, what's a meal? I don't know, you know, I, I think that usage in the trade would probably be, you know, like, I don't know, but more than one thing that's prepared there, so.
Well, he, he has a menu of, of like, a range of sandwiches and soups.
Sandwiches and the other thing, you know, with the roast beef, if we could do a cologne, if we could do with lettuce, tomato, man.
Well, no, we, we understand that, it's just, it's not just a roast beef sandwich that you can get.
I'm, I'm not trying to.
No, 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 but I'm just trying to.
I'm not trying to be too.
I know you're not.
I think that if you said to someone, I'm going to go to a restaurant to get a meal, generally that would not be a sandwich.
Uh.
Now, if I were gonna go to dinner or grab something to eat, that's maybe a sandwich. I mean, but this isn't my fault, this is another.
No, I understand, I understand.
You'd still be going to the restaurant, whether you're going for dinner, whether you're going to grab something.
Can, have any findings of fact that the um, existence of a beef on wek sandwich presupposes that there is a chef? Unlike an ordinary sandwich?
You're, you're, you're going with that, you're slipping away, who wants a beef on wek?
We're gonna name it after him.
There you go, the just.
Call him a chef. A chef, you call him a chef, he's a chef.
So.
How do we make this determination based on?
So I'm just saying that what you do here will dictate what must be done elsewhere.
Understood.
So.
And we could amend the code at some point?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, we could do that too.
May I remain that it's a public hearing, maybe, I'm just thinking that maybe somebody might have some ideas.
No, I understand that, but uh, typically before we open a public hearing, you would come up present and then the board would discuss, then we would open the hearing, so that's been our process, so understand that there are people probably who would wish to speak, so, yeah, and then we'll open the hearing, yeah.
Guys, I'm not familiar with all these codes, but they're operating now, are they selling a lot, selling a lot of food now?
They're not operating, they're not, they are not operating within the issued special permit.
They're in violation of the current permit that they have. Uh, since they opened. That's why we're.
Well, I mean, I don't do this.
So you're coming into the middle of the movie that has happened, okay, that someone else directed. Okay, so it's not, not on you, that's why we're trying to sort it and we're gonna be open.
I'm not turning it to her after all.
Yeah, Jeff, did you had a comment?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure this is this board's decision. I mean, it, it feels like a code interpretation to me.
Yeah.
And I hate to hit stick Steve with it, but I think probably that's where it's gonna start, not unlike, um, the, oh, when you made that decision?
Cover.
Cover, thank you. And so, I think that's what we're looking at here, it's, it's something I know he isn't really anxious to do, but I, I think to get the procedure lined up correctly.
Yeah, before we really take any action.
Because I don't, I don't think this board could be in the, in the business of interpreting the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's, that's his job, that's his job, you had a comment?
I just had a couple of questions that were off of the restaurant, but we can come back to it. So in this restaurant definition, it says meals are regularly served therein, come to a restaurant for the purposes of obtaining and actually ordering and obtaining at such time, a good faith, a meal therein, right, so it's this idea that you're going to an establishment where the point is to go eat, right, that's the primary point and the alcohol is the ancillary, that's the way the code's written. And then another one is the number of seats and tables, bars or counters shall equal at least seventy-five percent of the total legal maximum occupancy of the premises. Do you happen to know what your occupancy?
Forty-seven.
And you know what the percentage of seats or what seats you have?
I got this command, I think.
Got it, got it.
All right, was that okay, was, did Steve say you were?
Yeah, from all my conversations with Stephen, he was very nice, he thought I was going in the right direction.
I don't, I don't think she really.
I don't know that he.
Got she into this.
Yeah, I don't know that he had a final weigh-in on that at all.
I'm seeing twenty-three seats in the drawing, we're not even at fifty percent. And that's just a, that's a fairly objective thing that.
So that's another action item.
They would want, like, a lot more seating, yeah?
Or just reduce your total occupancy. Um, I'm not suggesting, but, but if you were to reduce your total occupancy and happen to exceed your total occupancy, so long as it's not a fire scene.
Steve could work with you on that.
Steve could work with you on that.
The patio seating have any?
So patio seating's interesting too, outside patio should be limited to seated customers, so I suppose you might be able to include the outside seating, are you gonna maintain that? Because that's a kind of a cute little space.
Yeah, we were hoping there would be, we could make that beautiful back.
Okay, so the other one that I don't quite love is F, where in F it says, this definition, restaurant. And just as an aside, the whole reason I'm going through this is because I don't like the code, so we'll go from there.
It's problematic.
Okay, um, not that it didn't have intent and purpose, I just think there might be something that we can look at. So the, this definition of restaurant shall not include delicatessen, pizzerias, sandwich shops, or similar carryout operations, now, it says there are similar carryout operations where food is prepared to order in the traditional manner, but quite honestly, I would love an outstanding little sandwich shop or delicatessen that I could go in, right? Maybe to delis and cheeses and sandwiches in the back where the entire purpose is to get me in and out and looking at the stuff they have.
People walking around Main Street.
Right, okay, sure beats the place, it's nice, that's the other, okay. The point where I'm going with this is, I think an establishment like this, the idea of not just being a place to sell beer and liquor and wine, but to have some lighter fare, there's something that we've got to figure out in our code to do that, I just don't know if we can do that right now, right? But, maybe if the application presents itself where it fits what is a restaurant, we can move it forward. Steve, Steve can then make a determination with you as you're moving towards operation to ensure that you're compliant, it's not up to us at that point, and then we need to go back, I think, as a board, to fix the code.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's abundantly clear, but first Steve needs to make the determination before the board can take action.
My conclusion.
Yeah, that's based on.
Maybe he will probably kill me.
Yeah, he will, but, you know.
Can Steve make the determination at the time of the application, or does he make the determination after we say, hey, this is an application?
No, 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 he makes it, he should make it before you make it.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we either.
Well, there was, we don't, we don't preconceive his determination.
Right.
So why wouldn't you move an application forward if we don't know what is determined?
So my next question is, is by the simple fact that it's here, Steve's looked at this application.
I think he looked at it from the perspective that, um, it was mirroring a use that exists currently in existence.
Okay, so.
And I'm not certain he understands or understood, or now, I know he doesn't understand.
He's on vacation.
That, um, this existing use is not legal, as the permit currently stands.
Okay.
And so he has to make a determination?
I think he does.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I hate to hold up things, but.
No, but, but what we could do.
Yes, it's flowing correctly.
Certainly what we could do is open the public hearing and then maybe leave it open and then have Steve work on his, you know, just bring it right back then at our next meeting, you know? Um, so we're, we're still, you know, it's a little bit of circling the airport, but hopefully the next we can land the plane.
We are making, people don't know this, but we are making a big investment.
Understood, we totally understand it and we're, we're excited.
Doesn't matter.
We do understand that and we understand, you know, time is of the essence, so this is kind of.
I appreciate everything.
But I think what I'm trying to convey to everybody here is that this is really where we are right now, this evening, and um, the action to be taken is to have our code enforcement officer make that interpretation of the code, we're gonna open the public hearing, we won't, we will not close it this evening, I, I think, you know, we'll just keep it open, um, and then bring it, bring it back, um, so we can try to move things forward.
You know what the next meeting would be?
The twelfth of November.
Twelfth of November.
Yep.
So I could go there soon.
Yeah, a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks out, um, so with that being said, is there more?
I just have a couple of things on the application, so there wasn't anything filled in for describe how trash and refuse will be handled, I know you might verbally tell us, but it would be good to get it in the application.
Everything should be in the application.
If I were down there, then we're gonna keep it exactly five feet from the back and everything.
Yeah, we're just blank on here, so maybe it's.
There was two of them.
Okay, so I guess.
All refuse would be located in the rear of the building and have a setback of the way, at least five feet from all other property lines.
Oh, there was multiple pages?
Yeah, there's two.
There's two pages, yeah. I'm starting to lose it, I know.
Thank you, thank you, all right, I did not pick up on that.
No worries, you got it.
Okay, and then, the only question, this is to the administration, if you could work with Steve, like, you know, one of the things we always talk about is as a restaurant, right, and Jeff, you've told me this in the past, like, you can't let one restaurant have one hours and another restaurant have a different hour. Basically, all your restaurants have to have similar opportunity for similar hours, is that true or false?
You could zone it differently, by zone provided that your findings for the difference made sense.
Okay.
So you're not treating.
That may be a separate discussion right now, because we have a public hearing we can open.
Well, I think it's the same discussion, because my determination, yea or nay, on this application is that the hours are in as close as conformity as reasonable to existing approved restaurants, because we don't have anything in our code that is uniquely different on a restaurant to its own basis.
He can make them his hours whenever he wants.
He can.
Within the limits of when a place is, he doesn't have, I'm trying to say he doesn't have to have it open for the, for the whole time that he's permitted.
I recognize that, but the extent by which you approve should not exceed the extent of existing restaurants, and I have yet to see any understanding of prior restaurant permits approved, so it'd be nice to know, you know, with the pub or Jojo's or Label Seven or Crepes or Hungry's, that, you know, and I was just jotting a bunch of those down, right, and there's a good amount of differences. And I don't even know if we're all operating, I honestly don't care that much.
And what, what, tell me, tell me the rationale behind it of somehow having everybody standardize their hours? Tell me what that would look like.
It's been suggested to me that you can't approve an application where the hours are beyond that which is generally currently permitted without the risk of it applying to all other restaurants as well.
Equal treatment.
Oh, well, the equal treatment now, I get, okay.
So this isn't, this is based on everything Jeff's told us in the past, so when we're looking at this application, you know, right now, I can't discern from all the other restaurants I just pulled up, but there's a lot of variation in terms of their hours.
So, so the business has a liquor license and they're licensed to pour till two A M.?
You can only wait for an hour after the last seating.
No, we, I understand all that, but I'm just saying.
What's your, I didn't hear your question.
The business has a liquor license, they own a liquor license and it's, they're licensed to pour till two A M., what happens?
Whatever our code says happens.
Okay, it's, it's interesting because the challenge is an investment that they've made in a liquor license.
So my understanding of the liquor license is that you can only serve an hour after the last meal is.
Yeah, you have a last, yeah, yeah.
So, to the point of, if the restaurant is approved to be open till eleven and then you can serve till twelve, if you get approval till midnight to serve, maybe nobody's buying any food that you're approved to, then you could potentially serve till one, so what I wouldn't want to do is have the hours of operation be in conformity with the hours of operation of other restaurants, so there is consistency applied. Is anybody's open now?
Um, I think he's open fifteen to twenty hours a week, he opens, how late is he open?
How late?
Is he late?
How late, at night?
I think from what I saw as the application, I think it's eleven, twelve o'clock.
Yeah.
I thought it was midnight, for some reason.
So Hungry's on Fridays and Saturdays is open till midnight, I don't know if that's what they're approved for, I really don't care, twelve o'clock seems reasonable for Hungry's at that location, but the problem is it's universally applied to everybody, this goes back to the fact that I'd like for our code to be a little more flexible, less onerous, I try to move towards what I think is, is reasonable within an appropriate pacing, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, Justin, sure.
You know, I, I really, I appreciate the application, I agree with our attorney too, that this should be first by the building inspector and finally from the thoughts of this board, so we probably went a little bit further than, than we should have been in some of the earlier discussion. I'm just wondering, is there any way to, I, I don't know if anybody in the public really needs to comment on this right now, is there any way just to postpone opening this until the next meeting without unduly?
Yeah, you can, you can open and adjourn.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to open it anyway, and then we just need to, no matter what, because we have publicly noticed the room, so we opened, so we opened.
I mean, I think it's, I think Ju, uh, Justin is correct that it's a little premature to take public comment before the building inspector, the code enforcement officer has spoken.
So we could open it.
Open and adjourn.
Adjourn, yeah, yeah.
But if we open it, do we have to take public comment because it's been open?
No, we're gonna adjourn the hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the application for the restaurant at nine Main Street.
A second?
Roll call.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Trustee Code?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing until our next meeting on November twelfth at six P M.
Roll call.
Trustee Code?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, okay, so you see where we are, right, this, okay, and, and Steve, Steve will be. Okay, and Steve will be back in the office, I think, on Friday.
Okay, if the thing went well in the next meeting, would I know that night at the meeting it was either yay or whatever? Yes, I've got a lot of things to do.
Thank you.
And thank you for your focus because...
Thank you for all your...
This was significant.
Steve will be in touch with you.
Yeah, he'll reach out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, which leads us to item number six. Code definitions of what is a bar, a tavern, a restaurant, or lounge, which goes back to kind of really where we are with, you know, the code and maybe how we would address some things, yeah.
So as we're talking with this applicant here, and we've had multiple discussions specifically about this one property, I wonder if perhaps a quick fix, I don't know how many other restaurants are in this category of being kind of micro restaurants in a sense? Maybe there are none, but I still think that we get around that by saying that all restaurants to be considered that are below a certain amount of square footage have less restrictions as it pertains to the presence of chef, the diversity of the cuisine, and then we're just done.
But what if you wanted to open up a larger deli?
Then it would... The larger standard, so we could, I'm just thinking of a really quick fix for this. So we just carve out, to use a deli metaphor or something, just to carve out the restaurants.
He's hungry still to be fine.
I didn't have dinner before the meeting. But no, just, you know, to slice it up a little bit. Exactly.
Boy, we're on a roll tonight. See what you started on.
Oh my gosh, you're on a...
Yeah, so that's my thought, you know, just micro restaurant to find that, cut out a couple of the standards and ship it.
I just want to make sure it doesn't preclude something else. I guess we can, yeah, Lily.
It's kind of what I had in mind, is like an easier, quick fix by just changing, addressing the definition of maybe not even restaurant, but kitchen.
What, or both?
That a kitchen can be a microwave and a, you know...
Simplified version.
Yeah. A much more simplified version because there are so many places I can think of personally that I think of as a restaurant. And certainly, they don't have a chef.
No.
And they're operating in a very small space and the menu's very simple.
Kitchen can be also, you know, used for the purposes of assembling food.
Right, instead of cooking.
You know, instead of actual cooking, depending, you know, there's other ways to...
I think the cooking upside...
You have a much broader definition in there that allows the opportunity for deli. I think maybe the thought...
You don't want a deli, let's face it.
Or a table at a deli.
So the challenge here is...
No takeout.
Right, nobody, well, takeout isn't necessarily bad. The challenge is, you can't, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't say I like this shop, some shop, but I don't like Subway, right?
Yeah, we can.
Well, the answer's how.
Because it's a franchise, because it's not a local business.
You can't, Jeff...
I thought we can.
You can't do it based on franchise, you can't do it...
Starbucks is here.
Right. And so, like a really nice sub-shop deli, you're going in, look at Pontilas.
You could differentiate it in terms of the ability to purchase co-cups.
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
Right.
Grocery items.
Yes, small grocery items.
Provisions.
Do you think one of those chains would go into a space as small as the space we're discussing?
Probably wouldn't be to a model, you know, they have an algorithm that they use.
I'm thinking, so that's kind of another reason that, you know, perhaps if we divide based on square footage and apply different standards, it might fix some of those.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is Starbucks considered a restaurant?
It was a franchise, I'd say.
It's just, it's a huge franchise, we're just talking about...
No, no, I'm just curious because they...
They serve food, but it's not considered to be a restaurant.
It's heated up food.
Yeah.
It's not exactly...
Nothing's prepared.
Yeah, I don't know what their premise is.
So it'd be a restaurant. Starbucks would be a restaurant.
They don't prepare any food, oh, under the new definition.
Under the new definition.
It might be a pre-existing, non-conforming use coffee shop.
Wow.
I don't know.
Once again, our mantra, pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah.
They're very special for me.
Yeah, so let's get some action items out of this so we can...
So one other thought to Justin's comment, where you just change your square footage, and maybe there's a number of locations you pick up that are, all of a sudden, your standard of the word restaurant is radically different, but you can still maintain the hours of operation similar to a restaurant, where then you don't, you know, you prevent the late night 12 to 2 crowd. It's more of a, you know, after-work sort of environment if it is more of a wine and drinks than an actual restaurant. I guess I'm okay with that. It'd be interesting to see, like, at what size do you pick up what locations and where are they? I think it's an interesting consideration. The other one would be, Jeff, you had put in the packet, other definitions not on the code.
I did.
Very good. Okay, well, I sort of like the idea because it goes back to, what if we just have something else? A lounge, right?
How about cafe?
Or a cafe, whereas a cafe could potentially include liquor, right?
I think of cafes as small restaurants.
Right? So the idea of creating a unique definition that is neither restaurant nor tavern that would allow for hours that are uniquely more controlled, but more flexible for the things that we might like to see. I don't necessarily know if that goes around getting a delicatessen, so I kind of like the idea of trying to figure that out too.
A bistro is a small casual restaurant with a relatively inexpensive, simple menu.
Oh, bistro.
A less strong bistro.
Bistro.
Bistro code based on square footage.
Fancy.
Tasty menu. But, so I don't know what the fastest route here would be and if it would immediately assist with the current applicant or necessarily should I think that we intentionally combine the two? But I think we've got to figure out something.
Well, either way, we need to be working on this, I mean, I think we all agree to that. We kind of have to revisit, what are the definitions, maybe we do need to be a little more expansive on some things. So really, I'd like us to arrive at an action item, you know, maybe to direct Jeff, or, you know, where are we going from this? Do we want to have maybe, you know, have the board just before the next meeting, maybe even, you know, just weigh in with Jeff on some ideas? Because you've had some good ideas, let's throw them back to Jeff.
Could we ask maybe the, I don't know, Steve, I don't want to, I know he's on vacation, but if he comes back before our next meeting, if he could tell us the square footage of this application and what other locations it might pertain to?
Yeah, that'd be good, just some internal research.
Just that.
An action item for Steve. Okay.
Take, for example, Blades, that's very big, it's necessarily wouldn't apply, but take a smaller location, maybe even like the Floris, which is currently vacant, might be too much square footage, right? If you create a square footage definition, it might, you can't subdivide these buildings.
Yes, the measurements are on this.
Okay, great.
Somebody wants to do square footage, want to look at that, Justin?
Yeah, sure, I mean, if we want 10% above that...
Just out of curiosity, just to see what it measures up to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you wonder how many buildings you pick up from doing that.
So that's three of those.
So then, do we...
It's her agent.
Do we all agree enough on trying to see what a code looks like for a square footage flexibility? Or would we rather the route of new definitions, like a bistro?
I'd like to add the bistro definition.
I think a bistro definition might be easier.
Yeah, just add it.
And then we zone it into a certain area.
So I think what I was saying is it would be, you know, you call it a bistro, I think that sounds classier than a micro restaurant.
Or a cafe. Cafe, bistro.
Yeah, and then just, you know, set the area threshold for 10% beyond what's in this proposal. Consider what that would capture, and then it would just have relaxed expectations in terms of the...
Food prep.
Remove the word chef and...
Yeah, definitely remove that word.
And the food prep, cooking outside.
And requirement for diversity of any, and that would just...
I would just keep it food preparation because that covers...
But you could require still onsite food availability.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's totally the understating of all this.
Right.
And then by defining something new like that, Jeff, you could also have hours that are uniquely different than the current restaurants that are approved, right? So a bistro would be a unique time.
Yeah, but really, do you care?
No, I don't.
Right, I mean, because of a small restaurant like that is not going to be open that late anyway.
Well, I would care insofar as you probably would want to maintain the hours of operation to be in that 11:00 to midnight range. You wouldn't necessarily want it to be till 2:00 a.m., being basically just another bar operating late on certain food. And so I guess my other question would be, what is the liquor authority thing of the matter?
Should we take it in two different pieces? Because that's a whole other piece in my mind, that we at least can start with getting our definitions pulled together.
Sure.
You know, because I think we're kind of on a roll with that.
Yeah, I'm finding definitions...
Oh, I said it again, we're on a roll. Okay. Yeah, does that make sense, Jeff, in terms of direction? And please, everybody, you know, shoot some things to Jeff, ideas, things that you'd like to see. I think that would be helpful going forward. And then we'll pull in Steve obviously on that and talk about the story.
It should be that bistro definition you just read.
Yeah, sure.
Does this, Jeff, just a quick question for you, does this sound like it would be relatively straightforward and simple and not causing too many other ramifications deeper in the code?
Sounds straightforward as long as you know the inventory of where this might go in, you know? Where you want to limit it, you could limit it to the downtown area.
All right, yeah, Lily, and then we'll move on.
Yes or not, because the scale is key. When you're dealing with something so small, the impact is not as profound. And so I don't think we would be, I don't think, as concerned regarding any of the things that we would be looking at normally if it was 100 seats, for instance. That has a big impact. This would be very low impact, so I don't think our concern would be... I understand what you're saying, but because it still needs a special use permit, and so we would still be looking at those criteria, and those would still be in place, I would presume. The 100-foot rule or whatever.
I just see it in any place that we would look at a restaurant or a tavern or any of these other facilities, right? It would be the same districting, that's the way I see it.
I think anywhere there's a tavern, you'll have a restaurant.
Right.
Okay, did you have a hand up? I'm sorry, is there a comment?
Yeah, I was just talking to the comments.
We can take them.
So I think we could really just have a question, which is kind of stepping way away from a whole bunch of details, and you shut around square footage and hours and things like that. And my question is, if what we wanted to do as a village is encourage as many different types of dining and drinking and community experiences in the village, how would we write the code? Because it feels to me like this call conversation is about, we need to define all these different types of restaurants, and we need to define all these different things and the hours that are allowed and the number of people and the square footage. And it feels very, first, it feels very humorous, like it's a lot of details have to work out and a lot of legal time to write all these specific little things. And then it also feels quite exclusionary because you, I mean, we, imagine you guys have thrown out 50 different types of restaurants, the sizes and all that kind of stuff. But there's, you know, there's a lot more out there, right? There's all kinds of, there's pop-ups, there's, I don't know, there's a lot of different things, there's food trucks, I don't know. But it just feels like if you were to turn this conversation around and look at it from the point of view of, if we as a village wanted to encourage diversity in our food and our drinking and our community gathering options, how would we write this code? You would approach it in a really different way. That's my question, and I'm not expecting an answer, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, can we think about it?
No, I think that is a good consideration, I agree with you on that. You know, if that was the way that I was approaching it, I think that would be the right way to approach the discussion. I guess what I'm thinking is, and you know, just kind of leave my approach to this, is just that it seems like most of us want a restaurant like this to succeed in a difficult area, and I want to get that done as quickly and painlessly as possible. If Steve looks at this and says, I can't define it as such and such. And so I'm trying to get the quickest thing done as it ended. And then I think that other discussion is a good one, but it would probably take months, in the very least.
So I think, I agree with you, I think it's a good idea. But I know, you know, where the board's going, it's like, how do we help this person right now? Because there's nothing in the code potentially.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want, you know, potential business people to get caught in a crossfire in front of...
Right, and that's kind of what we're doing right now.
If you can define a restaurant in the way we want, then basically anything can be a restaurant that we say is a restaurant.
And I think that we...
You're going to talk about...
Right, and I think that we, our board has talked about exactly that, taking a look at the whole districting, what we have now and what we want to bring in, and how can we invite more diversity and more business? Like, what can we do in our different districts and in our coding to do that exact same thing? We're talking about doing that in a different...
If I may, so I completely agree with everybody here, right? And to get this business through, you can't go through a zoning update, it just takes way too long.
Right.
All right, so the best thing to do is...
Just very simply redefine what a restaurant is in your district.
The... So you can, but then you...
To make that much more expansive.
You still have all the special...
And remove some of the language as well.
So I think that conversation is the conversation that needs to happen. It's just, to Justin's point, it'll take longer than it would be appropriate for this applicant. And so a good, I think a quick fix makes more sense. But I also think, I've talked about these things like restaurant overlays. So right now, we have a tavern overlay, so we have certain zones, right? And you can go in, and you can basically say, here's our definition of restaurant, and here's essentially pre-approved opportunities where maybe it doesn't require the more onerous special permit, but it's by right rather than by special permit, right?
So, sorry, my question is, isn't the quickest and simplest solution to redefine how you define a restaurant in the existing code instead of creating a new category, which is bistro, and putting a square footage restriction on it and a timing restriction on it?
It's more expansive of a conversation than we'd have time for. It's too, the conversation to get to the point to agree to come to a conclusion, I think, is longer than what's appropriate for this applicant.
Yeah, and I think part of that is that, you know, there's discussions about, you know, lots of fast food joints, you know, is that something that we want? And I think that there are carefully crafted definitions to make sure that we get the kinds of establishments that we want in the village. So I think it is more, it sounds more straightforward, but I think going into the DFLs would actually take quite a bit longer.
It's more what you don't want than necessarily, it's trying to figure out how to get what you want, but make sure that you don't get what you don't want. And it's the challenge of a more complex definition like this. Right now, it's too restrictive, but if you just change it to be more open, then you run the risk in the interim of getting things you don't want. And so that thoughtfulness, I just think, takes more time than would, again, would be appropriate for this applicant. But it is something that can be done.
And who knows what Steve will determine?
That's true.
But thank you, thank you. Okay, let's see, where are we here? Item seven, hotel tax in Village Avenue.
All right.
And you did some research?
Yep.
Okay.
I know, yep, yeah, I've got a conflict, I'm just gonna...
Oh, yeah.
You opened up a hotel?
Yeah, I'm gonna sit up there.
Yeah, you don't have to sit here. You can even just sit here.
So Dorothy, you did bring to us some information, let me see where we are here. So in our packet, there is this tax bulletin that discusses the term hotel, hotel occupancy taxes, city, local occupancy taxes. And I think that last time we talked, we were trying to find out what exactly we collect currently.
Correct, I reached out to Monroe County after five. Or we did touch base. So hotel tax is currently being collected by Monroe County as well as the City of Rochester. They collected individually, it wouldn't be something that would be discussed, we would actually have the act of collecting it.
Direct collection.
Direct collection.
Similar to our...
Utility.
Grocery fees, our franchise fees, it's the same thing. It's the same thing. We would collect it, we would have the review of making sure they provide the income statement that it matches. It's the same process.
Okay. And currently we're not doing that?
No, because we don't collect.
Okay. And that would be the same for like the Airbnb in the village as well?
It would be included.
I'm sorry, the B and B, just the B and B?
The B and B, yes.
Okay.
So if you want to go through the process, maybe, of just what that would look like if we were to move ahead?
To move ahead, you're going to have.
With the tax, because there's a process working with the legislature in Albany.
You're going to have to do a home room resolution determining that you want to collect hotel taxes. That would have to be provided to our representatives to go to Albany for approval. And I would suggest that you would need this gentleman right over there to help you write that. And then it would go to Albany and have to be approved. And once we got that approval back, then we would go ahead and institute tax. This is where I'm a little confused, because I'm thinking it needs some kind of law to back the collection, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's something that I think that we should direct, we should direct Jeff and Dorothy, if the board chooses to proceed, to just really nail down that process. Because we do know it has to go through the legislature in Albany.
Right.
And so, you know, you could direct me to reach out to, you know, the assembly member to initiate the proposed, it's called the proposed special act.
So just to clarify, the only tax that we could collect would be hotel occupancy tax. Is there a bed tax, a head tax, and what would the local occupancy tax?
We would just collect a general hotel tax.
It would just be that, okay.
Yeah, we would institute, you would determine the percentage you would like to receive. That would be something, would be part of your resolution. So if you're, let's say, 3%.
And I think, I think the state has guidelines for charging.
Yeah, what the charge would be.
Yeah, so we could, well, we can bring that back to the board, too.
Because I'm just kind of curious. How much revenue would that bring us?
We can, we can take a look at all of that.
It would be really important to see the course of going through.
Well, you don't know that, you don't know what you're getting in percentage of.
Right, but if you go on average, 3%.
I wouldn't know, because I don't know the revenue.
I look at it that it's more than we're getting now.
I would guess you would.
Comes in over the transit.
If we were to do a guesstimate, I would look at Del Monte, I would look at their average room cost, at the average rate of filling per a number of days, per percentage. I guess that would be the best way, but you're guesstimating that whether or not they have full occupancy.
Yeah, Lily.
What about the bed tax? I brought that up last night.
Yeah.
It has a bed, it's a, would be a local tax, and it doesn't go through the state.
None.
And it's added on to the customer's bill.
That's what I think we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Why do you have to go to the state?
It doesn't.
It has to go to state for approval.
For approval.
Then you can then levy the tax yourself.
You can't collect it.
Oh, I thought you meant like go to the state and get the state to.
No, 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 we have to get the state.
Approval.
To allow us to levy the tax.
Yeah.
So in other words, it's not quite similar, but remember when we advocated to lower the speed limits?
Yeah, I remember that.
You know, and then we can, then it's our, we implement that.
That was a, that was a home room resolution where you determined that you wanted, and then I have documents, I have to sign some in the legislature, so they have to put it up for a vote.
I remember that.
Yeah, it's a tedious process.
Yes, it is.
But at the end of the day, it's a revenue source.
Yeah, it's a revenue source, and also frankly, I'm for this. I think, you know, they're part of our community and they're using our infrastructure.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes when we get backups, it's our DPW crew, you know, there's things that we do to support them as well, so a little percentage, you know, I think is not a bad thing. You know, so if the board would like to, you know, direct Dorothy and Jeff to, you know, pursue the steps for this and what's required, and draft a resolution.
Yeah, I think that would be the next step.
Yeah, that would be the next step.
So I guess as far as the cons go, though, I'm just trying to think of what would be the disadvantage of doing this? I mean, obviously the workload on the village, right? So now you've got a private, now we've got, that's not that big of a deal?
It's different, totally different in to making sure we're receiving the profit revenue. And if we had a problem with that, then that would be something I have to bring to the board, because then you would need someone to go outside of the wing to see the numbers.
Right.
But is that really going to happen on a big scale? I think, you know, we have no problem with franchise fees. There's certain determinations that are made to collect that revenue, and the same thing with the utilities.
Which would just be added to the list of collections, really.
It'd be added to the list. You know, right now, some come in on a monthly, some are quarterly, some are year.
Such a small bite, that really, what's the incentive?
Yeah, for anybody to.
For an operation to say.
It's more troublesome for them.
For them to not, right.
Okay, they just want to know what's on the books, since you do it.
Yep.
So do you foresee anything that would be a negative for us to pursue this? I mean, does anybody else have any reasons why we wouldn't do this, and why it's been taking this long to visit this?
As I said, I know it's been discussed, and I think because there are so many steps involved in getting it resolved, it's been.
The reason.
Been held up.
But we know what the tension's going to take, I guess.
I mean, on my end, I'm all positive, I like revenue, so.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, I guess the steps are certainly something to consider, and, you know, there's, we've got to think about the ROI, you know, what's the return on investment of taking all those steps and paying for our counseling, helping those steps, administratively handling those steps. And then, you know, since we're already getting a share of the sales tax revenue in the county, including from hotels, to me, it might say something about the types of businesses that we prefer, we're levying an additional tax on the hotels. And I don't, I don't know if that's really true, you know, in my perspective, like, I don't really care if it's a hotel that we've approved, or if it's a, you know, a new bistro. And so I guess I would have to think about why we're taking advantage of hotels in that way. Does that mean we don't want them as much as some of those new places?
And I would say, because we can. I mean, if we could tax a bistro, I would, you'd do, I mean, I'm just looking at ways to get revenue into our community, so, you know, offset the taxpayers.
I guess, you know, sort of the larger question is, anytime you've ever been presented with a hotel bill, aside from the resort charge, resort fee, but I mean, do you look at, you know, the 3% of, you know, I don't know, I'm not so sure for anybody coming here or in any hotel that's like the deal breaker, you know? I look at it as, at least we're recouping maybe some costs because they are using our infrastructure, you know, it's just another.
And they're using our village.
Yeah, so that's just, you know, my own, my own perspective on it. I do think it would be worth pursuing, but we certainly can even try to develop a bit of a model of what that could look like from a revenue stream, at least, you know, kind of a dartboard step.
I would also point out, once the legwork is done, it's done.
It's done.
It's done, right.
And then it's.
It's.
It's in the hopper.
It's there.
Yeah.
It's just a incoming stream.
I think you should make a decision about if you want to do it before you direct us to draft a resolution. Do the legal work, so.
No, absolutely. That's why, that's right where we are.
I guess the other questions, too, are do other villages do it?
I don't think any of the other villages in our county are having it, but I don't, and I'm not sure, I can't say.
What other villages have that?
Yeah, I have.
There was a few, but.
Have hotels that would be substantial enough to do it?
I don't think, I don't think, and again, this is, I mean, my fellow villagers here, but I think we're more of a tourist destination, we have that vibe, so that's an unique position.
Sure.
It would be interesting to see a survey of, you know, Skinnialis and other touristy Ellicottville.
They have one.
Skinnialis has one.
They have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if Ellicottville has it, that's an easy.
Yeah, that might be another one, too. Yeah.
A little survey of those to see where we stand would be helpful.
Okay. So do you want to just have a survey first before we give direction to you guys? What do you guys want to do? Or do you want to just, I mean, I'm.
Can we come back in the next meeting and perhaps look at the two data pieces, which might be helpful, are which other villages that are touristic type destinations have a hotel tax in place? That would be much more inclined to say, let's do this if our peers are doing it as well. And then, you know, let's maybe get a number from a couple of those about what percentage it is, and then we can do math calculations about maximum occupancy, and then that times the number of possible rooms.
Sure.
And ballpark the revenue.
I guess the question I have, does the town do it? Does the town collect hotel tax? Pittsburgh, town of Pittsburgh with all these hotels down on Monroe?
There is not, they're not in the town.
The one down.
On the other side of Cleveland, they're in Brighton.
They're in Brighton, so Brighton do it, I wonder.
Yeah.
For me, at least, I think with those two pieces of information, I would be fine with making a decision on my.
Okay, do you have the action items?
I do, but we have a question.
Sure.
So David Wilks, will the board conduct analysis of estimated village income from all scenarios? Del Monte can, can, can Al Lampin, they cannot, Del Monte can't, STR is in the village status quo, Del Monte can't, would remain, that would remain after implementing the new STR laws directive.
Okay, we can do that, just take a look at what its current status is.
Of the STRs, yeah, because the STRs would be included in hotel tax.
Well, yeah, I would recommend it. If you're going to.
Sure.
Wouldn't leave anybody out.
Yeah, don't leave anybody out. Yeah, thank you, David.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, good?
Good. Thank you, everyone.
Real quick, Margot, I know you were supposed to have commented in the beginning, and you missed the public comment section. Why don't we switch, switch over to Margot? Thank you for your patience here.
Yes, ma'am. I think this is a new looking television. Cameron, is that a good view, Dorothy? Can you tell you the moment?
Camera's right there.
It's as best as they're getting.
Yeah. There we go.
That's, that's a view.
Do you want to see it?
Here. I've seen it, I know that, I know those pictures. I know.
So this is a good segue.
Thank you, Carol.
Segue from your comments, Lisa, because I think a great way to make the Pittsburgh more of a destination village, which would be to have these beautiful, beautiful ponds. And I just wanted to comment that this has to be a community effort, I cannot do it all by myself. And we have a number of different ways of, of people, people could give a dollar or $5, they could come to the gala. We've just changed the fee structure, so it's a sliding fee scale, and people can come for as little as nothing if they get a scholarship, as much as $1,400 if they want to buy a party, bring a party for a table of 10. So I want to make a point, this is a village, community effort, and I think having these beautiful, beautiful ponds here would throw people here, because it's going to be an example, and it's going to be an educational effort. And so thank you for the opportunity, and for letting me sneak in.
No, thank you. I mean, thank you for spearheading this.
And, and, yeah, and Margot, I think that not only would it bring people in, but it would be a benefit to the village residents that live here.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we always have beautiful trails.
Educational, climate.
So, yeah, so not just our visitors, but our residents.
Snake control, you know, all of it.
All good, plus we get.
Would you like to have this someplace in your village hall?
Ooh, thank you, yes.
That's pretty, yeah.
Yeah, can you leave it with Dorothy and we'll.
I will, it's $75, you don't have to pay for it, but it's not a bribe, because you defined that by all of you. It's less than.
So you can loan it, how about if you loan it to the.
That's right, we can rent it.
You can loan it to us.
Be a loan, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on loan. Thank you. Thanks so much, Margot, really appreciate that. Okay. All right, let's see. Oh, oh, yeah, Dorothy, the pro, the housing resolution.
Pro housing.
Yeah.
Board, remember, the board sent in a letter to pro housing for New York State with an interest of participating, being a part of that, part of that, sort of doing that, we have to make this resolution, is what I received from them, and there was a couple of other pieces of information they needed.
Oh.
We can't move forward without the resolution.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll start. So I was rereading this for tonight, came up, I think, last year, Lily, the mayor and I, I think we're in that meeting, it was fairly light. And at the time, it was, hey, you have to approve this resolution, I believe, in order to qualify for the New York State to be pro housing community, and then once you are in the pro housing community, let me just read right off the website, localities must achieve the pro housing community certification to apply to key discretionary funding programs, including downtown revitalization initiative, but more importantly, the New York Forward Program. The New York Forward Program was the big grant that Webster just got. So then I was continuing on with some reading tonight, and, not tonight, but earlier this weekend and today, and one of the things that I had come across was that the submission requirements, in order to be a pro housing community and qualify for the New York Forward Program, step one was to send a letter of intent from an authorized official to prohousing@hcr.nyc.gov, okay, and say you want to be a pro housing community. Then, you actually have two options, not just one, two. And I didn't know this last year, I wasn't concerned about the submission of the resolution last year, I think it's reasonable and it's intent, I think that there's a little hypocrisy if I vote for it this year, and I'll talk a little bit about that, but submission requirement option one is very simple, zoning map file in a format readable by GIS, two, a zoning code summary, three, housing planning, planning and building permit information from the five prior years. Note that this template includes the documentation of growth by 1% in the last year, or 3% in the last three years, but that is by permit. A week ago, we achieved that. We issued a permit for 75 in a row.
And we actually achieved it before then, too.
Perfect. So I am not going to vote in favor of the resolution, because we don't have to. We can be a pro housing community according to option one. If we wanted to do it according to option two, let me continue on, it says executed pro housing community resolution by relevant government body, they give you that, and then they tell you, hey, here it is, and it's exactly what we have in front of us. So if you're hearing something different, their website is not accurate, and I would like to see why.
Okay, yeah, let me put this.
Yeah.
This year doesn't count. I can't use the data from the permits for this year, I have to go back. So we only go to 2023. Yes, we admit it if we looked at this year, I can't look at this year.
But we have the adaptive reuse of the.
That was this year.
Oh, it was this year, so.
So everything you're saying is absolutely true if we get it next year. So to get this in for this year, we have all those other pieces that are required done. The only thing I don't have, and I can't submit them because we don't meet the mark, if I have the resolution done, I can submit it and we're done. I cannot look at this year.
But next year, you could look at this year.
Um.
And we're only, we're only three months away from next year.
Let me ask you another question. Next year, we can look at this year.
Yeah, we're only three months away from next year.
I know I received from them encouraging us to complete the process. I can
What's the downside?
I don't know.
Nothing.
I don't know when
Oh, the downside on passing it or the downside on not?
Not a way. There's no downside of waiting.
I think the downside of passing it, for me anyways, I feel like there's a little hypocrisy embedded in it. But I think because we don't have any grants that are going to New York Forward this year, we have absolutely no reason to sign a resolution unless 400% on board. So we can qualify for the pro-housing community next year without it. I don't even see a reason to sign it anymore.
And what's, if we sign it, what happens? I mean, you know, is it something that's
Yeah. Well, let me share.
Relatively benign.
I don't think so as much. So let me share with you why. This will continue on my tour of the resolution. So the resolution is fixed. There is no ability to adjust it in order to qualify for the program. It says, hey, fill this thing out. If there's no benefit to doing it, then we're just doing it basically to make a statement. Okay? That statement is broadly speaking quite accurate. There's a housing challenge. We've got a serious housing challenge in New York State. There are a lot of people who have limited affordability of housing. Right? And to a degree, what is the Village of Pittsburgh going to do about it is this resolution saying we're going to do something about it. So let me read the resolve. So with all the whereas', which I generally agree with, the question is, what are we going to do about it? And this is where policy, okay, is the policy that we're stating that we believe in to address the problem. And this is where I think I have some gaps and I also think there's some hypocrisy. So now therefore is resolved, this is the conclusion of this pro-housing statement. Therefore, it is resolved that the city, town, village of Pittsburgh, in order to take positive steps to alleviate the housing crisis, adopts the pro-housing community pledge, which will have us endeavor to take the following important steps. So it's an action. It's called action. Here they are. Streamlining permitting for multifamily housing, affordable housing, accessible housing, accessory dwelling units, and supportive housing. Those are significant co-discussions that while on some level I agree with some, I do not in earnest agree with all. Adopting policies that affirmatively further fair housing. We don't really have the ability at village level to do that, but let's move on. Incorporating regional housing needs into planning decisions. That is, again, stating that the Village of Pittsburgh is responsible for the broader regional housing concerns. Again, this is not, the village is not where you solve portable housing. You solve portable housing at a state and a national level with better wealth redistribution that not many people are necessarily going to agree with in earnest here, but that's fine. Maybe some will. Increasing development capacity for residential uses. It would be nice to be able to do that. Maybe we can have some conversations about that. An act in policies that encourage a broad range of housing development, including multifamily housing, affordable housing, accessible housing, accessory dwelling units, and supportive housing. This is not pick one. This is stating we're going to support all these things. So in short, this is the hypocrisy, and I'll be done after this. The fastest way in our village to fix a housing problem is to ask the short-term rentals to become long-term rentals and not grandfather them. And the fact that we support a pro-housing community and the first thing we're going to do is turn down or potentially vote no, I don't know who's considering it, on short-term housing and grandfathering them. My hope would be, as we stick to the one-year guns on the short-term housing, we bring those houses back into, the fastest thing we can do to fix a housing crisis is put more homes back in the block for people to move into with their families. End of statement.
Yeah, Lily.
Thank you. I also, that statement also jumped out, it made the streamlining permitting, that those steps that you need to take, I don't, it's a one-size-fits-all for the entire state of New York, and I don't know that it fits the Village of Pittsburgh because of our size. Therefore, I'm addressing the clerk because the clerk is the one that has put it on your agenda.
Let me just real quick. You're talking to each other. I'm just putting it to you because I received correspondence from the pro-housing committee
It's her job to bring it to us.
To complete this. So I'm giving you
She's doing her job.
Honestly, you can do what you want to do. I think the action item I'm going to propose before we go down this path is let me contact them and see if I can wait till next year or what steps if I can take into consideration this year. But I'm, you know, with everything they've given me, I can't take into consideration this year. I'm just following the steps that were started when they sent the letter of intent.
Conceptually, we were there. When we heard about the program, it sounded like
So this is, except if you want to go down this path that's between the five of you and take me out.
Thank you. This is a clarification.
Thank you.
And I'm glad it's on the record.
Okay.
Mayor, may I
This is one. I think a second Lily's still speaking.
Thank you. This is what I would prefer to do. I would prefer to line this up against our comprehensive plan and see how these steps also fit within our comprehensive plan, whether they do or they don't. Comprehensive plan is specific to our village. This is all over the state, so I don't know. So I would want to, I would really want to, step by step, in each one of these, and see how they, how they fit. Somehow, we must be able to also include on this seventy-five Monroe when that happens.
Next.
We're increasing the housing.
That was just part of the earlier discussion that we had because it will not affect anything this year because we have to review the past year. That was just brought to our attention by the
Yeah, but the other, the other streamlining permitting for multifamily and so forth, I don't know how that lines up with our village code.
I can give you feedback based on a discussion I had with the representative of Governor Hochul, but Lisa, you had a comment.
Yeah, well, they've, very well said. I agree 100%. Lily, also, holding in the comprehensive plan. I've been looking at the comprehensive plan and I don't see it lining up with what our village comprehensive plan is, so.
I just, oh, did you have another comment? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good discussion. I guess in researching this topic, I looked back in my notes, too, and we initially, the board initially agreed to send a letter on February 20th of last, of this year. And it was only a three-member board that was at that meeting, and it was a budget meeting. We usually don't take any significant kind of action that's unrelated to the budget. It was presented to the board, and I was not here at that meeting, but it was presented as something that all the villages are doing. When I looked down the list, definitely not all the villages are doing it. It's still a very small list. And so I, respectfully, Dorothea, I appreciate you bringing this to the board's attention. I think that it is not just an objective thing that we would just go ahead with and rubber stamp by any means, but I think that it's actually a political discussion. And I think that it should be brought back to the board, not with the clerk's name attached, but the board member's name, who's advocating for that position so we can really have a discussion as a board.
I think you were bringing it as essentially an administrative action.
Because it came to me.
All that aside, all that aside, discussion still with the board. I see
I'm just, I'm just giving you guys the information and the steps.
Thanks, Dorothea.
I think that has been, that has been covered, and I think we're wasting time right now. I want to talk about the conversation I had with the representative for Governor Hochul when this came out. I'm like, what are we doing with this? We're built out. How can we meet some of these goals? We, we don't even have zoning that even covers a lot of this. That was my very first response. Like, what would it look like for a village that's this tiny, that's essentially built out seventy-five Monroe or not? You know, let's, not that, because at the time, who knew? And I said, the only thing that I think that we could even look at really would be something like adaptive reuse, which we just did with that apartment building, you know, the conversion to the apartment building or maybe the office part, you know? And I brought that back to the representatives. So I never got a definitive answer. I also spoke to NICOM about it. You know, again, we're one of the smallest villages in the state. You know, how do we handle this? I think we signed it sort of in the good faith, yes, it's a great idea, but I don't know that we can necessarily implement a lot of this because of the nature of the requirements. And then the response that I did get from the Hochul's representative was, this actually was very much geared to towns, really large cities, much more driven by downstate and the need downstate for housing.
Exactly.
And so what really has happened was sort of this blanket kind of, everybody, can we all sign on? We're all pro-housing. Well, y'all want to be pro-housing. I mean, you know, it's not like a negative thing, but when you get down, when you drill down further, it may place an undue burden on communities like ours. You know? So I'm fine with, let's circle back, let's see what this really looks like, have a broader discussion about it and, you know, certainly calling the community as well.
I just want to conclude with, thanks for everybody's comments. I generally agree with the pro-housing community stances. I just disagree with these solutions being blanketed as a way to corral you towards, that's the only way you're going to get state aid and grants. But the thing is that last year, when we approved this, I didn't know if we were going to go and apply for a New York Forward grant. There were some great opportunities there.
There's some great opportunities that
And if we could figure out how to coordinate different constituencies and bring them all together and move some things forward, I think it makes a lot of sense. And for example, the last time we got together, we talked about maybe bringing in a consultant for the DPW. At some point, I'm hopeful that we have a bigger picture consideration for what happens with the old farms. But even beyond that, there's, you know, where do we go? I'd like to potentially talk about making the Little League fields a more permanent park, right? Bringing some things together with some improvements for the community that is not just beneficial for us, but a broader regional community is something that I think New York Forward would get behind. When we get there, if we're not a pro-housing community, we may not get the same consideration, even though I know there was some litigation and some concern last year. So again, in short, whether or not it's adaptive reuse or, you know, considering accessory dwelling units, these are all individual conversations that we can have, that if it allows us on those individual conversations, be eligible, but without necessarily signing the resolution, that's great, so.
That, that's where we have to reach out to the grant administrators. I mean, that's, that's actually really, that's technical information about how we could be eligible.
Yeah.
But I still think that the short-term rental non-grandfathering is a way to bring housing stock back to our community that is very useful and encourage the redevelopment elsewhere.
I appreciate that, but we have 650 residences, and right now, we have 14 short-term rentals that are less than one-half of 1%.
I think we have seven.
Yeah, I appreciate that statistic.
We have on record 14. If you know any more, please, please contact the office. Yeah. Lily.
After, after agreeing to that initial in February, we're two trustees present, I did do some research afterwards, and there was some information out there that indicated that actually it was not, I don't want to use the word legal, but that they could not tie in money, they couldn't promise money to those who had signed on to this program. They could not use that as the criteria. So that
There has been a challenge, and I don't even know where it stands right now. I think NICOM, I know NICOM was advocating for smaller villages like us after we had the discussions. I don't even know where that stands. We should circle back.
The reordering of the stack of applications on one's desk is probably not an official act.
Well, there's that.
But it might not be anything.
Okay, so let's, let's close this out and let's create the action item then, is really, what does it look like if we don't sign it? Can we do it the following year? And if you
I think that's the action item, to reach out to them to find out if we hold off till next year, when we're going to meet the criteria, if we can just follow everything then, and I'll get back to the board. But right now, everything they gave us does not let us use this year's data. And so we'll find out, and we can reach out to NICOM and see
Yeah, I'd like to follow up again with NICOM as well.
And just as a note, too, last year, when we did sign it in March, when you look at the website and you look at all the current communities that are included on the pro-housing communities, Village of Pittsburgh isn't on there anyway. So whatever we did when we passed it, we didn't actually go through the steps necessary to find
No, because we only filed the letter of intent.
Oh, okay.
That's why they came back to me and said we have to do the following steps.
No, we did the resolution. We passed the resolution, too, didn't we?
No.
No, and that's, that's what I was going to say, is that the letter of intent was that we had the intention, whether we took the action or not, was left open.
Ah, so this is them coming back to that
Yeah, so they're like, where are you going with this? That's, that's
This is the action.
And once again, that's why the clerk was just bringing it back.
Amazing. So I
From an administrative standpoint.
Great. I think we should send the letter of intent again, if you could bring that back in January or February, regardless of the resolution.
We intend to send a letter of intent? I don't know.
Okay, I intend to.
There you go.
I don't know. Let's still look deep on what. Okay. Next up, a meeting day for a business owners forum.
Yes, thank you. I would like to discuss with the board how they would envision a possible business owners forum. Would we be interested in including not only property owners, but the business owners themselves, two different entities in some cases, or separate? Property owners would be one workshop and business owners, another, because sometimes their perspective and their, their interests are different.
So Lily
Just a question, and what time of year? Because we're approaching the holidays. So are we seeing this like in January, February?
So my understanding for, for the rationale as to why we want to get together with and do this forum, we originally started out with some of the, the property owners that have empty storefronts. And we were talking about ways that maybe they would be enticed to look a little bit closer in getting more businesses in there. To me, that's very different than current business owners that are there. To me, the business owner should really be a part of that village association that we're trying to get through the chamber. That, to me, seems like that's where that would go. I think as a village, I would like to sit down with some of these major players.
With the landlords.
The landlords. And then you just talk to them about, you know, what they see as problems with getting their storefronts filled, what they'd like to see from us, and just kind of network and brainstorm as to how we can better serve one another and what their needs are, what some of their reservations are from, from getting some of those storefronts filled.
So do you guys think Would be receptive to holding it? Would you like to do it on a weekend, on a Saturday evening? Ever thought? I mean, considering these people are working, so that has to be taken into consideration, their availability.
Do you want to propose some dates or, or do you want to call the board, maybe to come up with some, throw some dates out? Are you
I'm hoping Saturday or something.
You're looking at a Saturday? Okay, just so
Are we looking at the current year or are we looking next year?
Well, that's through the holidays. You're right. I forgot.
I need to know.
I mean, personally, I think that these people work Monday through Friday business hours, that they would probably want to meet during their business hours than coming in on a Saturday or Sunday. So I think that's their work hours anyway, so to me, this is a work function for them. So I'm just saying that I don't think that we should rule out Monday through Friday. I think that we could open it up to anything.
But what, what time of year do you want to do it? Now, Lily brought up the fact that people are going into the holidays.
Yes.
So, you know, what's your, what are thoughts? Give Dorothea some, a little bit of direction.
Here's, here's what I would say. All of us come up with a list of people that we'd like to have at the first one, right? And then we provide that name with contact information, email. We send those all to Dorothea. And then Dorothea looks at those and sees, is it eight? Is it 10? Is it 15? Whatever that number is, I don't know them all. And then we actually coordinate around them rather than they coordinate around us. And wherever you can get the most and most interest, whatever time that is. So maybe it's, maybe, I don't know, Mayor, if he might want to, or whether Lily or Lisa, you know, send, once we get these names put together, email, send them all a list and say, hey, we'd like to sit down and talk and hear about, you know, pros and cons and experiences and tenancy and occupancy, and just talk a little bit about the direction of the village and how you think that we can help, or what the right structures and concerns are that we have and they have. It may make sense to have some, some business owners there, too, but I'm comfortable with that being a second step.
Okay. And I would ask the board for a purpose statement because
Yeah, I would give a really finite agenda. These are, you know,
What is the focus of the meeting? What you're hoping to gain? So that information can be passed on.
Right. So let's, I don't think we're going to send this out in the next two weeks, right? Or would the intent be to send it out soon?
I would like to send it out, just to get some
Well, you just email amongst yourselves, tag everybody in, send it to Dorothea, and then if everybody has a few names and people that they want on the list, put your, what you would perceive to be the purpose statements.
Okay. Just so the board is aware, this will be an open meeting, so it has to be publicized and everything, and we'll just work around the calendar.
We'll just figure out where we go from here.
Okay.
Maybe we can have it be a shorter, lighter meeting one day and put an hour conversation in.
Surely adjust. Okay.
Of course.
Let's see. Oh, minutes?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Go back to a format that we used a number of years ago that maybe would work in this scenario as well. And that was sort of a roundtable discussion in which the property owners were at the table for discussion with trustees who were mostly enlisting mode. But there was no, the public was present, but they were not commenting.
So bill it as a roundtable?
That's what I, that's my thought. Otherwise you don't, I don't, wouldn't want it to turn into a debate between.
Well, it goes to the, what the intention is of what, what you want to achieve. So if you want to achieve a discussion from property owners.
Correct.
Then it is part and parcel of the format and they're informed of that.
Yes, so that's, that's my suggestion, so they understand the format.
If, that's fine, it can be a, you know, workshops. Well, it all goes down to the bill, it all comes down to the board and the amount of public comment you want to receive during the meeting.
Which we could take or not at the time. It's always our discretion. Okay, next up, minutes?
Can you give me? I was wondering, does anybody want to do, I don't have any member items, but maybe we want to do those per minute.
Oh, that's true.
We've got a bunch sets of minutes.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we do have a lot of minutes, don't we? Okay, quicks, member items.
I have two quick member items. The first one is there's been a little confusion as to the sheriff liaison. I, my understanding and staying with Lily's was that I was to be liaison for sheriff. And that was written in 2024, but then Alexandria pulled it up and saw that 2024, 25 switched to Lily again, so.
That actually is, she looked at the wrong set. She looked at what was put in front of the board, not what was adopted.
Okay.
And what was adopted is you were the liaison. Unfortunately, she continued sending the email to Lily to invite her to meetings. We didn't get any feedback that we had, she didn't know.
Okay.
We didn't get that feedback and we didn't hear from any of the parties. So she thought it was correct.
Okay, no worries.
So we'll make the correct.
So we'll just make it so then I'll be getting the notification.
You'll be receiving.
All right, that's easy. Yeah, no, I didn't. Okay, and then the last one, and I think, Mayor, you did respond to me via email about the Village Business Association. I'm really, really, really passionate about getting this together and I just wasn't sure. Last time you said that you were going to make a mention of that when you went to the chamber meeting. And was there movement? I mean, I saw that you said that they are interested, that they have said that they've been interested. Is there any actual movement or action?
What I wrote back to you is that the action that they did take was to have form a subcommittee within the chamber addressing, you know, the village merchants. But what they came out of that was an initiative called Shop 14534. And obviously that includes the entire zip code, not just the village. That is their response to the advocacy.
So they don't feel that they, that village businesses deserve any kind of separate kind of association or arm?
They feel, I can tell you, if you look at their mission, anybody can look at their mission statement on their website. They serve the entire business community for the village and the town. And so I think they, they see it that way. Now, what we, what I know we all have seen is that different groups of merchants have held, you know, different events within the village, you know, that kind of thing. But they're also part of the chamber. So, you know, you're always, you know, just so you all know, anybody can be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. You don't have to own a business. You can just sign up and become a member and participate. You're a member of our community and they always want to hear you. You can go to their events, any of their meetings, anything. So, you know, there's always the opportunity for advocacy.
So there's no interest from the chamber to do any kind of separate arm that would be called the Village Business Association?
No.
They, they want to keep it, or get it to 14534?
This is what they, this is what they responded with. And, you know, what I put in the email to you, you know.
Yep, all right, so the business room.
But I do, I do think, yeah, there's still other businesses that local, you know, in the village may be interested in doing something.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's my.
That's where we are. Any other member items?
Just that nothing's been done on the R5 zone change and I think that's okay. We'll come back to it soon. The R5 code considerations.
I don't know, what do you want to do?
Nothing yet. Nothing yet.
Okay.
Just simply state that it's.
It's out there.
It's out there.
Okay, in the universe.
Yep.
Okay, Justin?
No.
You're, you're, okay.
I do want to make, I want to make this statement just so whoever's listening online can know that we are going to do our Shein Place onsite meeting Thursday, correct? With everybody with the board, which might be interesting. We invite, we invite the village residents to join us and come along for our little.
Yeah, we're sending out a bulletin to remind people too and posting it as well. Yes, for all the members of our community. Yep. Okay, so minutes?
I think we're probably done with Jeff too.
Oh, Jeff, yes, thank you. You are released to the universe.
Thanks, thank you for saying that.
Thanks, you guys. Okay, take care. Good evening.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. Okay, first up, May 13. Thanks again, Jeff.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Great, great night.
Okay, you too.
Any thoughts or comments or emotions?
I'm just, hang on, I guess as I'm going through the packet here.
Oh, wait a minute.
June 10 is the first.
Yeah, hang on, it's not matching up.
Oh, they're out of order. Yes.
Oh, I see.
They're out of order. They're in the members.
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
All right, just.
Typically, it's going to be.
Did I go through and did you see any problems?
Well, should we start with June 10? Let's start with what's really there in front of us.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, thanks. June 10, folks.
June 10. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 11. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lankir?
Hi.
Trustee Lankir?
Hi.
Trustee Coe?
Hi.
Trustee Marshall?
Hi.
Mayor Palmer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Next up, June 18.
Motion to approve.
You were here.
Ah, you.
We missed you though.
Aw, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 11.
So a second, please.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lankir?
Hi.
Trustee Coe?
Hi.
Trustee Lankir?[1591.18]